Everybody, I think that clock is a little slow, so it is not popping high and I'm going to stop. So, welcome to today's planning development control. It's February the 16th and 9.30. I'd like to first of all introduce the people around the table here. My name is Tori Evans and I am the Chair of the Planning and Development Control Committee. And to my right is my Vice Chair, councillor Jane Rutter. The other councillors are sitting either side on the wings of the committee and all have their name in front of them. The case officer always sits there. And then we also have officers Julie Finnick, who's the Service Lead for the Built Environment, Fiona Sutherland, who is our Legal Representative, and Claire Buchanan, who is operating the timer today and is the clerk for the meeting. So, moving on to our papers. No, avoid doing that, I have other things to tell you, sorry. Safety drill, if you hear a fire alarm, then it is for real, we're not expecting a practice today. Just obey instructions which will be given to you by an official that will arrive. And the assembly point is in Abbey Gardens. This is being recorded and livestreamed on the council's website. But there is also a TV recording being made, which will be uploaded to the YouTube, the council's YouTube, after the meeting where it will stay. Members of the public, if you are speaking today, it's slightly different from what we've had. If you've been here recently, you come to any of the public participation mics that you see in front of you. And if you would like to sanitise your mic, we have left out wipes for you to do so. And on public speaking, you have three minutes, unless you're a ward councillor, in which case you have longer. And please, once you've given your presentation to us, please don't interrupt at a later point in the proceedings. I will have to stop you after three minutes and normally wait until people have finished their sentence. So we move on today to the procedural items. First item on the agenda, apologies and deputy members.
Thank you Chair, all members are present today, thank you.
Then disclosures of interest, or you may choose members to declare them at the time of the application. The minutes of the previous meeting, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And then we have an update sheet. Could I have your agreement to accept that as part of the addendum to the report, thank you. And we move on then to the first item on the agenda, item six, which is 21/01731/REM. And this is amended plans received for the land to the east of Sun Lane, Oxford. And we are deciding on appearance, landscaping, layout and scale of residential, Park and Stride and public open space elements and the layout of the Employment Park. I have been just reminded that the first item in the afternoon, which is item 10, the Little Kitchen Company in Kingsworthy, that item has been deferred and will not be heard today. And deferred for further consideration of access from the public highway. The case officer is Robert Green. Good morning, Robert, and when you're ready, please give us your presentation.
Thank you Chair, good morning everyone. Just to first show the site in context, you can see the application site outlined there in red to the east of New Oxford. You have open fields to the south, a collection of buildings just off the image there to the north, and a solar park to the east. It looks like a large site here, but as you'll see later, we have the residential to the top, employment land to the bottom and the central space is open space. Just to highlight some surrounding features to the site, so it's cut in half, so this is first literally the north of the site. This orange area that you have here is the conservation area. So just to clarify, the distance between this point and the closest point here is 70 metres. That's the closest mark to the site, as you can see the conservation area does extend at many angles to the north as well. We also have a public right of way running to the immediate north of the site. And a listed building here, which is in the town, at St John's Church. We've also got the protected ecological features over 600 metres away to the north. And then moving to the south of the site, you have further rights of way shown here in red, and collections of listed buildings, again shown there by the stars. Chair, just to remind members, this site has planning permission for the erection of 320 dwellings and Employment Park and Parkland. The outline application also approved the critical development and all matters of access to the site. And that included the A31 roundabout works, the realignment of Sun Lane and other strategic road networks, which have been approved at the outline stage. So this just shows visually what has been approved. So again, we have the 300 up to 320 dwellings to the north, the employment lands to the south and the parkland in the middle. And these are the roadworks which have been approved. So you have the new A31 roundabout leading into the new road network here, and also the realignment of Sun Lane with the roundabout here. So the site has permission, but the applicant has to follow up with an application for the approval of reserve matters, which have been reserved by outline consent. These can be neatly categorised into these options here. So we have, today we are considering the layout, appearance, scale, landscaping and other minor details reserved by condition. So what I'll do, Chair, I'll take members through each of these individually and starting with layout. So on the left, we have the approved layout of the residential area at the outline master plan stage. And on the right, we have the plan which is seeking permission today, so as you can see, the two very closely match. Moving closer to the residential area, this is the approved roundabout and Sun Lane realignment. So the development is accessed from this new roundabout with a central road running up to the north, before bending to the west and into the main road again. You then have a collection of cul-de-sacs and houses spanning off of these main roads. Just some other features that you can see here. This is the sustainable urban drainage system pond or subs-pond here. This is the Park and Stride car park, which I'll discuss in great detail later. We've also got Lampton's Court, which is a residential complex here. These schools along Sun Lane and the solar park you can just see to the east there. So in terms of layout, the site has been divided into four character areas, which I'll cover in great detail when we'll admit the appearance of the dwellings. But just to talk them through these briefly now in terms of layout. You have the northern edge, which is closest to the existing town. We have a number of detached, sorry, terraced and semi-detached properties and a denser layout and a bit more ordered. You then have the village ring, which rightly overlooks the open space in the centre of the site. You have the spine, which is the main road into the site, where you have again a denser and taller arrangement following good urban design principles. And then you have the Parkland Edge along the south, which overlooks the Parkland. And here, things are a little less ordered, they're mostly detached dwellings. As you can see, there's no clear building line along that edge. This shows the location of the affordable units across the site. So the red dots are the affordable rented units and the blue dots are the shared ownership units. There are some collections that you can see, particularly this one here in the west. The supplementary planning document for affordable housing, the policy asks for a spread in a way which results in different types of housing being in close proximity to one another. So as you can see here, yes, we do have the collection, but they do address separate roads, these are flat buildings. They're also interspersed with private units as well. So as you're travelling along this road, you're also getting to a large number of private units here. So that they are interspersed with the private units and the new home delivery team in the council and are satisfied with that layout. Same on layout, but moving to the Parkland. So again, on the left, we have the approved outline master plan and the plan seeking permission today. Despite the finer details, as you can see, they do very closely match. And a bit of a closer view of the Parkland there. What I'll do is I'll zoom into this in the northern section, this southern section. So you can see, see the finer details. So moving to the north of the Parkland. This large circle area that you see here is the local equipped area of play, which has been centralised compared to the original plans. There are opportunities, as you can see, for smaller local area of plays if that is to be adopted in future. We also have a woodland bike trail in the bottom here and an area which is reserved for allotment or a burial ground if the appropriate consents are achieved in the future. This is all additional landscaping, so you can see a substantial amount of new trees on the eastern boundary, which is a requirement of the allocation policy. And moving south, again, you can see the additional planting, again strengthened on the eastern boundary. This area is left largely undeveloped with paths crossing through grassland and meadows there. Moving further south to the employment land. So again, on the left, we have the road layout approved by the master plan. You notice on the right that there is any details of buildings in front of us today. That's because this area will be subject to a separate future reserve matters for those buildings. Members will note these lines which are coming off of the approved highway network. These have, there's a condition in the update sheet which I will take you through in further detail at the end of the presentation, which just for the avoidance of doubt is being clear that this permission would only be keeping in line and approving the approved road layout that you can see here. And it isn't approving these road junctions. The reason for that is because in the future reserve matters application, that as well will be able to assess the safety of these junctions. So I'd also propose to remove layout of the Employment Park from the proposal description. Again, just for the avoidance of doubts that the applicant is aware that we're keeping this to the as-approved outline plans. Moving on to the appearance of the buildings, again focusing on those character areas. So first with the northern edge. This street section that you see here is taken from this area, so overlooking the car park and the subs-pond. And then moving to the properties which overlook the open space. As you can see, they've got the slightly taller arrangement with the connections between them. The slightly more natural features in terms of tile hanging being introduced. Moving along the spine, where it's important, following urban design principles to get at that enclosure. So you do have buildings of a higher scale here. And as you can see, connected by features to make that sense of enclosure. There's also an introduction of a more variety of materials here. So we have render and flint to reflect Oxford, which I'll cover in later detail. And then finally, the Parkland Edge. Which again, you have the larger detached dwellings and introduction of more materials. So you do have more natural timber cladding here. The proposed elevations and appearance are shown in the central band of the screen there. And the images around it are taken from the analysis of New Oxford. So you can see the architect, the applicant has taken cues from the small dormers and the taller buildings that you get across Oxford. And also the use of varied materials, which you can see in these pictures here. So this is taken from the spine road, which is the main road through the site. Moving on to the smaller units, as you can see, the architects picked up on the, again, the variety of materials that you get in terraced properties across Oxford and reflected that in their design. And also the use of features such as porches and bay windows, which again have been introduced to these smaller dwellings. And again, another view, so this is taken from the Parkland Edge, so that the larger housing with the natural timber cladding. Again, just focusing on the dormers and the bay windows, which have been taken, cues have been taken from Oxford. And finally, more properties along the spine road, which use tile hanging, which as you can see from the pictures is used across Oxford in a number of ways, both on historic and more modern properties. And some watercolours of the estate, again just showing the variety of materials and the features that have been added, such as the bay windows and porches. Turning to scale, so orange is two-storey and red is 2.5. You can see that most of the scale in 2.5 is provided along the spine road and overlooking the central main space. And just to show you some of those taller 2.5-storey buildings. So at the top there, we have an elevation of one of the houses and an example of one of the apartment buildings there. Taking you through the landscaping of the site, first focusing on the residential area. As you can see, there's a number of new trees being planted throughout the estate. This is just showing one part of it, including along the main spine road. But there'll be a number of pear trees on both sides of the avenue. This does show it on one side, but the finalised and detailed landscape plans do show it on both sides of the avenue running through the site there. And then on to the Parkland, so again, we have the additional trees, which I've discussed previously. And again, moving south on the Parkland, you have the additional trees being planted throughout the site and along this pathway which runs the length of the site, providing more screening along the Sun Lane runway. Moving on. Chair, that's working again, apologies. Moving on to the other matters, so first focus on the Park and Stride car park, which is being positioned in this location here. Just to point out some features, it's the Park and Stride with access onto Sun Lane. And these are the school buildings here, so that's the distance between the two. Moving closer to that Park and Stride, this is the layout showing 30 spaces. This is the technical drawing showing the manoeuvrability throughout the site. There's an additional pavement being introduced here to allow a safe crossing over to the pavement onto the other side of Sun Lane, which exists already. This is currently shown as one metre, but it is to be widened to adoptable standard. And we've requested a finalised plan of this car park, including the pavement and also the connections into the residential estate, so that that forms one of the conditions. This is a photo of the Park and Stride site, to the other side of these trees, running up to Lampton's Court, which you can see in the background there. And a closer view of the Park and Stride site, which is directly in front of us, running to just beyond the start of that barn there, which is to be demolished. So this will be the car park directly in front of us. Moving on to the pumping stations. So this is the northern pumping station, which falls off of the Park and Stride car park. And the southern pumping station, which is alongside the employment area, which you can see here. And a view of that southern pumping station, so it's just the other side of this gap in the trees here. Again, there's a condition to obtain the finalised details of that pumping station, including noise assessments and also landscaping plans to screen it from this gap in the trees. Moving on to lighting, so a blue dot signifies a lamp, this is the residential estate to begin with. This is considered acceptable, it isn't excessive to what you'd expect in a residential estate. There is a condition, given that the road is subject to adoption. So there is a condition to obtain finalised lighting layouts, just in case there are any changes as part of that adoption process. And also to receive confirmation that these are downward lighting. And that's obviously in the interests of ecology, being on the edge of a market town and also in close proximity to the national park and the dark skies night reserve policy. And again, lighting on the southern section, so these are the approved roadworks on the A31. Again, this isn't excessive and it's on one side of the A31. But the same condition applies, so we get finalised details after the applicant has finished the technical specifications with the county council. And just to round up on some of the other matters, so utilities, and obviously we've looked at the pumping stations. We've also received a utilities assessment as well, which regards things like indoor across the site. Refusals, again, there's a condition which, following the adoption of the road or any changes to the road layout, that allows us to see the final refuse strategy, so we can consult internally with our colleagues in the waste department as refuse authority. Boundary treatments vary across the site, so there are a number of walls onto the public spaces following good landscape practice. Timber treatments in the garden and a number of hedges which are acceptable. And footpath and road widths, which have been assessed by the highways authority and hard surface materials, which are acceptable but are also subject to the material's condition. Chair, before I finish, I'd just like to run numbers through the update sheet, just to put members through those individually, bullet point by bullet point. So the first point is in response to the comments from the Hampshire County Council Education Authority, and that's concerning the school land, which is to be given to the schools on the opposite side of Sun Lane. Some of this is dealt with in the section 1A6 legal agreement, but because the comments were talking about access reward and concerns over levels and access, I found it reasonable to add another condition, just to make sure that we can, in consultation with the education authority, be comfortable that the site is levelled appropriately and is accessible to all. The second bullet point is just a few points of clarity, just again to say that the hard surface of the poses is considered acceptable and we look at materials on inspection. Also to confirm that the affordable housing units contain sufficient living space to meet the bed space requirements in the supplementary planning document. The third bullet point is just to clarify that the New Oxford Conservation Area is 70 metres from the site, at the closest distance. And the fourth bullet point is that employment land condition, which I was discussing in the presentation. Just for the avoidance of doubt, to make sure that we're removing all reference to those road access points, which is off of the approved road layout in the employment land. And the removal of permitted development rights, this is usually included at the outline consent stage. No condition was included, so permitted development rights haven't been removed. I think it is reasonable to remove Class B rights, only because now we are aware of the levels of the site and also the layout of the site. Class B rights for the extensions to the roofs, so things like large normal windows, which, given the levels and the nature of the layout, which we can now see, I think it is reasonable to remove Class B, so we would have applications for dormers, we can assess those individually. In terms of the other classes of the permitted development order, so to allow extensions and outbuildings, roof lights, I don't think it's reasonable to remove those, only because it wasn't removed at outline stage and also the legislation provides sufficient control under the limits of three-metre extensions for us to be able to be confident to say that that isn't, it's not required to be removed at this stage. And also, the national planning policy framework is now more certain that they must only be removed in exceptional circumstances where there is significant justification. And finally, Chair, just, I added the drawing numbers to a number of the approved plans on condition to. The officer's recommendation is for approval, that concludes the presentation, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll be moving now to public speaking. We have no objection from members of the public, no town council representative. So the first public speaker is the one of the ward councillors, councillor Margot Power. Good morning councillor Power.
Good morning Chair, thank you very much.
When you're ready, you have five minutes.
Thank you.
The clock is now over there, I hope you can see it now.
I can, thank you Chair, I think it should take five minutes. I think I've been working on this site for over 12 years now. An enormous number of members of the community have made their views known, sometimes very graciously. Broadly, this application delivers the benefits to the town that we were looking for 12 years ago. And I think that is very useful, I can mainly support the application. However, the lack of a construction management plan is causing some distressing concern. And there was an early version, which we were introduced to, which left the residents at Addle Down Lane looking at a three-mile detour for two years. I very much hope Hampshire have taken that into account and addressed the matter, but we don't have the details before us. The big problem for me is Park and Stride, it's not going to serve the needs of anybody. It's going to be no use for the visitors to the open space or any possible users of the burial ground or the allotments. I don't think either will happen on this site actually. The school finds it of insufficient size. I did put out a troll on social media to find out if the proximity being 230 metres rather than 410 would actually attract any users. I do not see that anybody will use it as Park and Stride at the school. From the proposed site, it is a very narrow pavement adjacent to many, many parked cars up to the school. My main concern is that it will become overnight parking, particularly Nursery Road, where there is currently inadequate parking. And I am concerned that it will become divisive, because the residents of Sun Hill, which is what I am continuing to call it, will be paying for the enforcement and maintenance of this Park and Stride. They will not be the ones that use it. And I can see it being divisive, which would be very unfortunate. And finally, Chairman, I would like you to seek reassurance on my door mice. We do have door mice on the site. I am not, I am not confident that the conditions we have ensure that habitat is provided before the existing habitat, which is the hedge along the existing Sun Lane, is destroyed. And if you could seek reassurance on that point for officers, I would be grateful, thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for councillor Power? Councillor Power, are you saying that you don't think the Park and Stride is large enough or it's too far away?
I think it's in the wrong place. Chairman, I think it's in the wrong place. The original plan showed it to the south of the school, 400 metres. That makes it usable for people visiting the open space, any burial grounds, any allotments. It also is a far more open and attractive site to the south of the ridge. 400 metres is a nice comfortable leg stretch before school. I just do not think it will be moved, Chairman. I'm not worried, but the original planning consent gave enough space for 30 cars. So I don't think we're in a position to challenge the number of spaces provided. It's the location, and purely in simple, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Westwood?
Thank you Chair, yes. Question about the school, Park and Stride again. I'm not familiar in detail with the area. So I'm just interested in the catchment area of the school, whether it's for local Oxford or whether it's a wider catchment area. And the colour, the method of transport for the kids to get to the school, are you expecting a lot of cars to go there?
This has come up very much through over the last 12 years. So you have two schools on the site, you have the infant school, which is managed by Hampshire County Council. And you have the junior school, which is managed by Parents' Mount, so it's an academy trust. The vast majority of children to this school do live in Oxford. However, many are driven to school because parents are going on to work, and that's the normal process now. I would expect children from the new houses to walk to school, because it is attractive and easy. And there will be no benefit to their parents in driving them. But we do have children from other villages coming into the school. So, you know, there's, it's, I don't know what current admissions policy is, but I would expect the infant school at least to be, to be very local indeed, because we have good village schools nearby. Does that answer the question, councillor? Does that answer the question, councillor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I believe, Margot, you said there was a footway which was narrow. Is this an adopted footway? And if so, how long is that narrowness?
Could I ask Mr Green to show us the slide which showed the path from the Park and Ride over to the path on the west side of Sun Lane? There, thank you very much. If you could look at that, councillor Reed, you'll see that the walkway from the Park and Ride crosses over to that area on the left, which is currently green space. So I understand that there will be another path across that green space, leading you to the adopted path, Hampshire County Council, on the far left of that green space. As you can see on that... Sorry. Now, when you come to the southern end of that green space, you can see it bends back towards the road. And thereafter, that footpath is only about three foot wide, and we have a lot of trouble with vegetation. We're frequently having to ask for an extra cut. And there are parked cars at school drop off and collection time, all the way along that western boundary of Sun Lane. So if you're going up there with a pushchair and a toddler, you are constrained. And you also have the risk of people opening car doors, and it's a tricky one. I would prefer it where there should be a path through the new estate to the school. I think that would be nicer for the children, the parents, and it would be better used. But again, it comes back to the unfortunate location of the Park and Stride. That's not where it ought to be. It should be on the southern side of the hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it. Councillor Power, thank you very much for coming along. Now, we have a supporter who is the agent, Mr David Jobins. Good morning, Mr Jobins. Yeah. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Firstly, thank you for allowing me to address you this morning, but also to your officers, it was a very comprehensive report and a very good presentation, and I'll have to apologise for any repetition. The application has been subject to extensive discussions and negotiations since submission in June of last year, and your officers have been extremely diligent and fair in their handling of the application, and that goes across through your landscape, urban design and planning officers. It's important to restate, this is a reserve master application, and the outline consent has both conditions and a very extensive Section 106 agreement, covering a number of matters raised by councillor Power and others, for which separate approval will be required outside of today, and that includes the management of the Park and Stride. Matters for consideration, therefore, relate to layout, appearance, scale and landscaping, which you've already heard. The application does follow extremely closely the approved outline master plan. As you can see, it's 302 dwellings, including 121 affordable homes, the 42 acre country park, the diminished landscaping, and also the 30 space Park and Stride. The site is subject to very significant constraints, particularly levels, which impacts on the layout. In terms of scale and appearance, the designs have been revised to better acknowledge the historic core of New Oxford, and I hope you agree with that statement. In terms of the country park, we've had very helpful meetings with the town council that were here today to listen to the debate, and I'm sure that dialogue will continue after today as well. The Park and Stride, obviously it's a requirement of the Section 106 that 30 spaces are required, and indeed they are proposed as part of this application. We believe this is the best location. It's on the site of the former Bowles Club Car Mark. It is level, it has an existing access, it's discreet, and it is safe to use, as confirmed by Hampshire County, who raised an objections. It is twisted enough to the school to be Park and Stride. We don't anticipate it being excessively used. In fact, we hope it isn't excessively used because a lot of people walk to the school. And there is natural surveillance from the new properties. In terms of other locations, it was, the street state was shown to the south by the employment park. The schools adamantly said they will not use it because it's too far away and up a hill. So that's why, another reason why we've located it where it is. But also, the levels mean there would be a significant and very dramatic impact in terms of cutting into the slope to create a car park somewhere else. It's not something we would want to propose because of the visual impact. As I've already said, the 106 deals with the proposed management and maintenance. And Taylor Whittie, the applicants have agreed to take responsibility for the northern area of public open space, which is at the request of the town council, and also the ongoing maintenance and management of the Park and Stride. As you've heard, Hampshire County have no objections, subject to a £20,000 contribution towards traffic regulation orders to improve parking in Sun Lane. And therefore, in conclusion, Madam Chair and members, considering your officers have made a balanced and sound planning judgment, and I hope you will agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr Jobins? Councillor Pearson?
Yes, listen, Mr Jobins, the village green is the intention to register that as common land, so it can't be built on in the future.
I'd be, sorry, Madam Chair, if you're referring to the village green within the centre of the site, or the parklands, I think that would be, it's intended to be maintained by the management company. That would preclude a village green application at some future date, but there would be no way I think that site could be developed in the future. It's overlooked by the houses, it's obviously public open space, and the 106 would require it to be maintained in future.
We'll save a personal part on you. Thank you, David.
Councillor Watten? Thank you. Is there a construction plan, a phased construction plan for the site? I know it's not as big as Kings Barton, which is, but we are having problems with the phasing of that and the connectivity of those separate communities as they're built out. So could you just, I understand there isn't a management, a construction management plan, which is in these documents, so could you just explain to me how you're planning to build it out and how you're going to keep those small new communities connected effectively to the school, to the roads and so on, whilst you're building it out, please?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. There is a condition on the outline planning consent that requires the submission and approval of the construction management plan. So that's something that we've already started thinking about, and I can assure members that it will not include using Sun Lane as any access for construction traffic. So the intention would be to construct the roundabout of the A31 and then provide access through, via a hall road, if you like, through what is supposed to be the parkland to the new development to the north, the residential event to the north. So there will be no construction traffic using Sun Lane itself. This has got to be agreed, in any case, at some future date. In terms of connectivity, again, the Sun Lane roundabout is part of the early infrastructure to be provided as part of this, and that would provide linkages to, for example, the school and to the town itself. And on passant, in a way, there is also a contribution in the 106 towards improving linkages to the town centre as well, which we feel is also important for the new development, but also for existing residents. So I hope that goes some way to answering your question.
Councillor Green?
Thank you, Chair. As you know, we just got a very progressive climate emergency process. So how do you envisage this being built? Are we going to build it to very high installation standards and put in B pumps and that sort of thing?
Again, Madam Chair, it's a very fair question. Unusually, the outline consent didn't contain a condition about energy efficiency, but your officers, as I said earlier, have been very diligent, it's one word for it, I guess. And they're proposing a requirement, an energy statement. I think that would be a combination of measures, probably. I mean, there will be electric vehicle charging points. We've already shown solar panels on some of the properties where they work. Also conscious of the impact on the South Downs, so we need to be careful that we don't, too many solar panels, well, that'd be very obvious. So it is a requirement of this reserve matters application through a condition, and we welcome it. And of course, building regulations is coming fast and furious in terms of improving energy. It would be a fabric-first approach, but of course, there will be other measures such as solar PV or S or C pumps, et cetera, et cetera.
Have you considered ground source?
I think we've got to go through all the options, in honesty, because there are many options, as you appreciate. We've certainly looked at S or P V, but I'm sure your officers will give us an equally hard time later when it comes to discharge that condition. I'm sure they will.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. The previous public speaker indicated that the car park for this Park and Stride may be in a position which would be used by local residents in the area. Will he be trying to administer some sort of control on that to ensure that, unfortunately for them, it doesn't happen, but it is for exactly what the purpose is proven for?
Absolutely right. Again, Madam Chair, there is a requirement in the 106 to agree the management of the Park and Stride, and I agree, there needs to be a management regime agreed. It's not just residents. We need to be careful that they're using it, it's other perhaps visitors to the area that might want to prevent. But I agree, yes, it needs to be agreed with yourselves, and that could take many forms. We've had a number of discussions with, for example, the town council, and they're keen on signage, but there will have to be quite a strict enforcement regime, I'm sure.
That leads me on to a second one, Madam Chair. You refer throughout to a management of the public open space. Has the parish council been involved in this, or the town council, sorry, in this case? And if so, is anything, are you going to go down the avenue of the town council becoming the manager?
Again, Madam Chair, they've been very much involved in this, and as you've heard, there have been numerous changes made to our proposals because of the town council's comments. So for example, originally there were a number of children's play spaces scattered around the open space. They've asked for it to be in a larger central area, which we've now accommodated. In terms of the north, if I put it the northern area of the public open space, which is immediately by the railway, the town council did not want to take that on, so we've agreed now to set that on as part of the management of the overall site. So again, yes, we've had very close and very helpful discussions with the town council. I'm sure that dialogue will continue after today. We're also talking about the naming of the sites and things like that. So I do believe the town council are getting very good hearing. Thank you.
So I take it then the final management and ownership of the site will remain with?
Sorry, I didn't answer that. So in terms of the 106, I think it requires a 999 year lease to be offered to the town council. I think the way it works, it'd be offered to you, and then you would offer it to the town council.
I'm quite familiar with the uses, yeah, that's what I was trying to guess. But the ownership would finally end up with whoever manages it, presumably?
I'll take it, so 999 years, yes.
Can I ask you, Mr Jobins, who decided on the bedroom mix, both for affordable and the residential properties?
Well, again, I'm sure Mr Green will be straight in there to correct me, but I believe the outline consent established, well, again, in the 106, there is a mix stated, so we've followed exactly the affordable housing mix. And I believe Mr Baldwin is happy with that. So again, we followed the one, two, three and four bedroom property percentages that you require. In terms of the market, I mean, generally that's market driven, of course, but again, knowing that there's a requirement for an emphasis on two and three bedrooms, and again, I think it's in the report that confirms that there is a majority of two and three bedrooms for the scheme. The real outline consent, of course, is for up to 320, and as a result of the levels and the challenges at the levels, we're at 302. But we maintain the same portion mix, ratio of mix, that makes sense.
It also says in our report that there isn't a great demand for two beds. And I see that in the affordable, the largest number is in two beds, and the second largest is a residential.
Well, again, what we've done, we've followed the requirements of your housing officer, who's confirmed that this is acceptable. And again, sorry if I keep boring you talking about the Section 106, but there is a requirement for us to agree with the council, the actual mix, which again, this is part of. So again, it's something we've been recommended by and we followed.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's it for you today. Thank you very much for coming along. Rob, anything you want to add in the light of what you've heard from the speakers?
Yes, please, Chair. Really just to confirm what David was saying there, but on the screen in front of you, I've picked up the phasing plan. And that just demonstrates that, as always expected, and as has been conditioned on the outline consent as well, that the A31 works will be constructed first, and then that allows the construction of the site via the parkland to get up to the north here. And yes, the construction management plan is a condition of the outline consent, so I'm sure we'll receive that shortly and we'll be consulting with the highway authority and everybody really on that to make sure that it is acceptable to allow the initial construction of the roundabout. Just on the Park and Stride, again, just to confirm that the, as David said, the northern open space is now to be included as part of the management company, and they will also look after the car park as well, because they were concerned about ongoing maintenance. In terms of the footpath that we were discussing there, just to clarify, the footpath is on the eastern side of Sun Lane. So you can see that it's not shown on this drawing, but it will be shown on the condition drawing. So it runs to the east and then crosses to the existing footpath on the west. That plan would also improve the connections between this point and the residential estate as well, so that there was a comment there about people may want to walk through the residential estate. With the improved path, they will be able to do so from the Park and Stride. Also mentioned dormice there. The applicant has made their application to Natural England for the dormice licence, and that ended in the outcome of the decision today. The biodiversity mitigation and enhancement plan, which was secured by an outline condition, has been assessed by our apologies already and been approved under the outline consent. That covers dormice in detail. There's also some extra submissions which the apologists have asked for, and that's reflected in one of the conditions as well, with a statement which covers the additional work taken for dormice as well. There was also talk about the lack of need for two bed properties. Just to be clear, that's the New Hampshire Liberty Team has said that there's currently a lack of demand for two bedroom apartments, not just two bedroom housing units, but that they feel that given that the number on the site is quite low, they're unable to raise an objection or raise any significant concern on that point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So members, we move now to the report, and we start with the principle of development, which is on page 27. And if there are no questions there, then we move on to the layout and design, which is on page 31. Could I ask about the the removal of Class B rights for extensions in the roof, which is on our update sheet? And yet, I see that a lot of the houses do have bedrooms in the roof. So how does that fit in with that condition?
Yes, so the smaller dormices that you see there, if members are minded, to approve will be approved as today. What Class B can allow is some very large dormices, not that we see there, which have been well designed to reflect Oldstead, so they can cover the roofs, the roof to the rear. So by removing Class B, it does allow that element of control, because that's the only concern in terms of what can be allowed under permitted development legislation. But it doesn't conflict with the plans that we see there for those existing dormices.
So it's small dormices, we can see one, we can see two houses with them. That's all right. Large dormices not?
In general, open design terms, yes. So in the future, if we get applications for the smaller dormices, then that may be acceptable, one we consider at that time. But as I say, Class B can allow some very large rear dormices, which I feel that we need to control in this instance.
Yes, I have another question, so I'll ask that now. I don't know where I read it in the report, but there was a criticism of bedrooms over garages. I think it was in the affordable housing. Do we have any of those?
Yes, Chair, there was. I'm just checking the number. Yes, there's six in total flats above garages across that site, which again, with the New Hampshire City Re team, they did mention that they're usually to be avoided. But the justification here is that the officer's recommendations, they're in appropriate locations and in small numbers, they can be a useful design tool to add more units without compromising space. Obviously, it's quite limited in terms of development size.
Councillor Westman?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, can I turn to access?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, um, can I, can I turn to access? It's on page 28 under that section. So it, it mentions there that pedestrian connections get approved in the revised plans, et cetera. The section 106 funded, um, an outline consent secured, um, actually approving the pedestrian connection into the town. So my question is, uh, that we're, we're looking to minimise the use of vehicles where we can, and, uh, I don't approve any of that, so can I just understand whether those connections form part of this, uh, permission that we're looking to give today, or whether they sit outside that and need to be subject to separate discussions? And the second part is, there's no mention of any cycle provision and access. I'm thinking back to the school, I would like to encourage as much foot transport as possible to the school, and this development gives an opportunity for us to improve that connectivity, that active travel between the town and the school.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, um, a- as you mentioned, there matters of access were considered and approved at the outline stage. So just to summarise that, and as the, the, as David mentioned earlier, there, as part of the 106, there is a financial contribution to improve the connections between this point and up to Sun Lane, just, just in terms of, um, the, the footway connections rather than the, the traffic. Um, the, the improvements that have been made as part of this application, um, i- in those terms is to make sure that there's a connection up here to, to the north, as you saw, there's a public right of way along the top, and also more, as, as we said before, the more foot connections onto Sun Lane here. Um, there are, there is a plan for, so I just saw a, we're not seeing anything on the screen that you referred to.
Oh, okay.
Um, thank you. Yes, sorry, so the, uh, the footpath connection I was talking about is this one up in the corner to meet the right of way to the north, and also the additional footpath connection of Park and Stride, which can be fed through the site. Uh, we also have a plan to show that the, uh, new dwellings have sufficient cycle storage, um, i- in, in set locations. So it is a mixture of both, as I said, matters of access were approved at one stage, but there are some things that we've added uh, for the benefit of that as part of this application.
Not quite clear if you answered my question there. So, under this permission, if you're minded to give it today, does that include, um, additional work to provide better access into the town under this permission? Or is it going to be subject to separate piece of work?
Yes, so, so apologies, that's, that's been given under the outline, so a- as I said, the legal agreement secured was that financial contribution, um, to, to, to be used, so it is secured, is that with under the outline?
So I understand this financial contribution is secured, I'm asking about the detail of the, uh, connections that will be created. Is that part of this plan or not?
Uh, no, it isn't, it, it's been approved.
Councillor Benton?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as a board councillor in Whitley, one of the problems that is all right, regular rising in North Whitley, parking problems, people parking on the sort of main roads and so on. It's very difficult to tell from the scale that we've got here where parking is provided and, uh, where, where is parking provided? Is adequate, or are we going to get lots of cars parked on roads?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So the, the, the parking has been provided in accordance with the residential parking standards for Winchester. Um, it's, it's in a number of formats, so you have a number which is the front of the property, so you have two spaces for the property that it's sat in front of. Uh, you, you have the large car parks and the parking courts for the flats. And also, you can't, as you, as you said, with this scale, you can't really see, but there are a number of visitor spaces as well. There's a road in there, uh, and all along the roads, there's visitor laybys as well, but yes, it is the standard.
I can follow that. Any cycle paths at all, or are you providing cyclists?
Uh, not designated shown, no, obviously you've got the roads and the shared surfaces, and they have pavements, and also you've got the footpaths and the, well, the paths in the park as well, which, um, is not determined at this stage whether they're just for foot or, or cycle, so there, there are routes for potential, but nothing shown in the residential phase at this point.
I'll ask about bin storage. Um, does every property have somewhere to store their bins? And then they'll presumably have to bring them out to the road?
It does, yes. So we, we've had a bin and cycle storage plan, which shows that bins can, can be stored. Um, one of the conditions is for that final refuse strategy in terms of, you know, drag, dragging bins to certain points and, and how, how they make it there. So that, that's been delayed because after the adoption process, things may change, but we will get those details and check them with the refuse authority.
I'll say councillor Levingham and then councillor Rude.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we heard from the agent that, uh, charging points will be available, but is it available to every property that is going to be built? Because it's important that everybody has a chance to have an electric car if they wish.
Thank you, Chair. So condition seven, which is the one that discusses energy, um, that asks for a design stage energy statement um, to demonstrate the use of sustainable energy measures and electric vehicle charging points. So we'll, we'll get the plan at that stage to make sure that, that there is sufficient electric vehicle charging points. We've also followed that up with a prior to occupation condition, but just so we can, we can definitely show that they are, they have been introduced to the site.
Can we also, on that, then, ask for the charging points to be a two-way one, so that energy can be transferred from the vehicle back to the property?
Uh, we could consider it under that energy statement, obviously, I'm not aware of the technical aspects of that and whether it is, it is possible for this site. So I wouldn't feel comfortable confirming it, but it is definitely something we can consider under the energy statement, if you will, please.
Councillor Ridge?
Thank you, Chair. With regards to the, um, waste collection services, um, bin areas have been, or will be identified. Will they ensure that they will take the extra bin, which we are understanding will start in April? Is there enough storage on each of these sites for additional bin or bins as required? And the second point, if I may, with regard to the visitor parking element, um, will these be horizontal parking as against, uh, herringbone? The reason I ask that is, Chairman, because on one particular site, we have a herringbone which is developed, um, which makes it rather difficult for the passenger to work traffic. But until such times the roads are adopted, nothing can be done about it.
Well, thank you, Chair. I mean, i- in terms of the bits, that, that's one of the reasons why the refuse strategy was delayed to, to form part of the condition. Obviously, what we'll do at that time is it, it will reflect the latest guidance of the council at that time and, and in terms of the, the bins as well. Um, as, as I said, each unit does have bin storage, but I think at that time, you know, considering that may be into the future, um, we can consider that in terms of the amount of bins that we have, um, at that time. Um, and just to confirm, they are horizontal, so it's, it's parallel parking, so you can see, this is an example, uh, sort of here, here and here, so it's, um, yeah. Parallel parking.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, visitor parking is actually, um, quite a hot issue. I mean, I know it is in Whitley, and it is, is also in Noam, because the developer has just not provided enough visitor parking. Um, could you just, can you indicate to me where the visitor parking might be, or is that still to be decided?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll just get a, a general plan rather than that zoomed in one, so I can highlight that. So again, it's, it, it is throughout the site, this is testing one of my sites, we, we've got a, a long band here, um, again, here, here, and they are throughout the, they're on the spine road as well, and also these sections along the bottom. So you've got two, one, three along here, so they are just in, in, in laybys throughout the estate, adopted around.
Yeah, 300 odd houses, that seems fair. Uh, many more questions on this section we're, we're looking at. Um, councillor Westwood, do you think you could just move your microphone just a little nearer you?
Okay, yeah. Apologies, I'm back to parking vehicles again, so just, just to follow up on other questions that have been asked. Um, what is it, and this, because these are unadopted roads, it may not be appropriate, but firstly, is there going to be any restrictions on parking on the roads as opposed to in the bays within the department? Um, uh, secondly, is there going to be any consideration for limiting the speed of the vehicles to, say, 20 miles an hour, which is an aspiration that we may have for urban areas going forwards with some form of natural speed reduction um, through planters and so on, you know, the way it starts, that was the question.
Thank you, Chair. So a- a- as you mentioned, the, the, the roads have been signed to adoptable standards, the intention is to have them adopted. Um, in terms of any new parking restrictions, that would have to form part of a separate, separate regulation order. So again, that, that has its own, um, consultation process, that's, you know, not to say it would happen if the whole estate was to be double yellow aligned, just that, that, that does have a separate consideration. Um, in terms of limiting speed, again, that will form part of the adoption process. What I have done is added the condition, which gets the finalised roads details in the event that adoption doesn't happen. Um, and then that allows us to be comfortable, you know, matters such as that with speed. If, if it is adopted under that condition, we can also consult with the highways authority as well, because there's, there's a few ways that we can tackle that.
Councillor Rotten?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask, will there be any electric charging points in the car park?
Not shown at the moment. Um, a- again, the, the condition, there is a condition asking for the finalised layout of the car park, um, just to show that there are disabled spaces and, and sufficient spaces for people to open doors. So it could be shown on there. Obviously, we've, we've got to consider the management of that in terms of the management companies. So there may be a few questions, but if it is possible, then it can be submitted under the, that, that condition for the finalised layout of the car park.
Can you, can you sort of try your best to make sure it is, because I think car parks without any electric charging will be obsolete soon.
Yeah, I've made a note of that, thank you, that's all right.
Okay, so we, um, we're sort of, I mean, everything doesn't fit in, should leave, can't imagine, but we're looking now at, um, page 33, the impact on character and appearance of the area, and the several pages from now on. And then, I'm sorry, councillor Rude?
Use a white pen, I think.
I think something to do with a dark pen blending into your background.
Yes, Chair, and it's about, we don't often get the opportunity to ask questions on lighting, um, because that's usually addressed by Hampshire County Council, and it's been taken away to a great deal from this authority, as it had been in the past. Who at the end of the day will actually own the lighting? Is it Hampshire County Council, or will this, again, be referred back to the town council if they are a lighting authority in their own right? I'm not sure whether that will not be called.
So the, this southern highway works at the A31 roundabout, and what I've referred to as the strategic network in terms of Sun Lane, obviously that will remain adoptable, and the, the technical specifications of that are being decided by section 278 procedures with, with the county council. So they'll remain, um, adopted. Um, the, in, in terms of the residential, obviously, again, that is dependent on the adoption status. Um, they've been designed in, in a way that they, they, they can be adopted, but a- again, we've got that finalised road layout condition, we can get details of that in the unlikely event that they won't be adopted.
So the ownership of those will go to County Council or Town Council?
Uh, County Council as adopted, um, i- i- if, if it isn't adopted, then we've got the lighting addition to fall back on to get details of that to make sure that it is going to the right, the right body.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Benton?
Very much. Um, we've mentioned the management company in a few, few places, particularly with the Garsellin space, but again, my experience having Whitley, um, management companies often responsible for a, a number of houses, and the costs to all those residents go up and up and up, they're not always happy with what is being done. Um, and they always look at it as being charged twice, once through council tax and once through the, the management company. Um, are we able to, um, sort of bring in any reassurance for people who are going to buy these places that they're not going to get overcharged all the time? Can we do anything with the sort of conditions for management? That's really a difficult one.
Yes, so the, just to clarify, the, the, the large parkland in the centre of the site that, that is, that was intended to go to the town councils, that, that remains public, as you said. Um, originally, the northern open space was due to go the same way, but that is being formed as part of the management company. The section 106 of the outline requests that, the details of the management strategy and everything to be submitted before it is handed over, so we, we will get a chance to see how that will be managed. Unfortunately, we don't know yet because it's a requirement of the 106, but we will see it.
I think you find, because we've had a somewhat wide experience of, of management companies, I think you find that the affordable housing, um, don't pay the management charge, the, um, association pays it, and normally the residents get together and form a committee and robustly challenge, um, any increases, um, and demand to see the accounts. And of course, when people buy their houses, they do know that there is a management company. Could I just ask about the affordable housing? Normally, we have a paragraph on it, but we haven't now. And, um, it's too late now, because it's, when we get to see these, then it's all set in stone. But we do have a policy that we will pepper pot affordable housing, do we not?
Thank you, Chair. So, um, this was referring to the affordable housing supplementary planning document, and that, that there is a policy in there that, that discusses, um, making sure that they are spread across the site. I mean, i- i- in general, yes, they, they are spread across the site. I think, as I said, there are a few collections that you can see. And the policy in, in the SPD that, that I was referring to there, it asks for a spread across the site in a way which results in different types of housing being in close proximity to each other. That then goes on to discuss sort of numbers of collections. Um, this has been checked by the New Homes delivery team. We are satisfied that these locations, I mean, again, I appreciate there is, there is this Westing collection, just to clarify that, that these are flats and they're facing onto different roads, and they're also interspersed with the private units as well. They're, they're also not a closed collection of affordable units, you know, they're, they're on the way to o- other units, other, other private market units, and that's the same for everywhere, so we have checked this with the New Homes team, who are, who are satisfied, as are officers in their recommendation.
Well, opinions can differ on this, and my opinion differs, um, from that of the council. This is the first time we as members have seen this distribution, and I would say that the affordable housing, um, on, in the left hand side, sort of nine o'clock, is not pepper potted. I would say there is quite a lot of, um, dense groupings there, but it's too late. Um, you know, I, I do hope that our housing colleagues are going to perhaps, um, discuss this with us before we see it as a fetter complete. You can't do anything about it. Okay, um, any more questions on the impact and character and appearance of the area? So we move on then to the next section, National Park. Any questions now? And then there is a chapter on historic environment, page 37, 38, 39. Neighbouring amenities, page 39, 40 and 41. Sustainable transport, page 41, 42 and, um, 43. And then we come to ecology and biodiversity. Um, we've already heard councillor Power querying the dormice. Um, and, um, I think he said, Rob, that that will be covered on biodiversity?
Yes, Chair, so the, the applicant is applying to Natural England for relevant consent in terms of dormice, and we also have the conditions of the outline as well, which cover that.
Yes, and then on page And then on page 49, which is condition four, and I'm pleased to see that swift bricks or boxes there. As you know, everybody, that's one of my passions. But there's nothing down there about bats or sparrows. Sparrows are apparently also declining. And in the South Downs National Park, there is a requirement of three sparrow boxes together when they put them. Is that being covered?
Thank you, Chair. So the bats are being covered by the outline conditions, the bat boxes. Obviously, the condition four has just covered swifts there, but I do take your point on the sparrows. So if members are agreeable, we could just ask for details of swift and sparrow boxes to keep it a bit more general. But at least that gives us opportunity to consult internally with ecology as well to check and make sure that the balance is right between the two. So we could amend condition four, just to ask for both of those if members are agreeable.
Is that agreed that we put in, we mentioned sparrows? I know that we're still talking about sparrows, sorry. Does that agree? I think it's very important to encourage species which are dying out. Councillor Lee?
Yeah, I'm going to ask about bat boxes because obviously this is a countryside, a farm we're knocking down, which will probably be a roost in the summer. But I'm also concerned with the hedgehog population. And we need to be taking into account that they have easy movement through the site because with the use of large black fences and that, it does restrict their mobility. So we need to have a way to allow them to move around the site.
Thank you, Chair. I can't think off the top of my head if that is, in terms of having the spaces between the fences and walk halls, as you said, to allow that transfer through the site. So I was just looking through the conditions to see how that could be included. I can't really see a way that it could be included in one of the existing conditions.
Condition four, is there? Well, with members' approval, shall we add hedgehogs to the list? And leave it to officers to insert it where appropriate?
Yes, agreed.
Then, um, anything else on the biodiversity, ecology? So the next heading is sustainability. And then, um, anything else that anyone wants to ask on the conditions? No? So debate. councillor Rotten?
Thank you, Chair. I think this has been an important development for Oxford and that has been reflected in the time it's taken to come up with these final plans. And I know it's been a very difficult and hard decision for everybody to make in terms of what is best for the town as a whole. But I'd like to commend officers and welcome the design, including the local materials. Welcome the level of affordable housing that's been included in this development. And I would encourage the school to do all it can to encourage parents to use the Park and Stride provision. I know it's not necessarily in the best position from everybody's point of view, but I think, you know, there are different views on that anyway. So perhaps the town council can talk to the county about improving the footpath on the other side of the road and improving the maintenance of that. But I think it's, I think the whole of Oxford Town Council and their local councillors are to be commended for their hard work in working with the developer and the council to bring forward the best possible development at this site for the whole of the town of Oxford. I know that this new housing is very much looked forward to and needed and also that the wonderful open space will be appreciated by the whole community. And I look forward to it being very well used and very well linked back into the rest of the town. And I hope that all those improvements are going to happen in tandem with the development. And I await with interest the detailed plans for the employment work, the employment land in due course. Thank you, Chair. I will be supportive.
councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, when I first looked at this, I thought, at last, congratulations also to the officers. Because at last, there's sign that biodiversity is being looked at seriously. I've been looking for this for several years now and here it is, lighting photos. I know it's in section 44 and condition 12, I think it is. At least that's the condition code on page 44, where the biodiversity enhancement plan was passed as part of the outline application. So I'm not quite sure, I was still complaining about it at this stage. But I've got to say, in fairness, I think biodiversity is a great deal more than bat boxes, swift boxes or the sparrow. It's providing the habitats where these animals and creatures can live. Yes, swifts do prefer to nest on cliffs, houses, which is modern day equivalent very often. But I like the idea that hedges are being preserved, that yes, some of the trees are going down, but more are going up. And so I think there's going to be a net gain in the number of trees on this site. I like the, as far as I can see, most housing units, including the box of flats, have got gardens, which provide green corridors, which again is all part of allowing animals, birds, animals, well, they are animals. It also allows vegetation to develop, which is often the food of the animals we're concerned about. So if that habitat is there, then you're going to get the birds and animals we're concerned about, including hedgehogs. What does want to admit of it is a trend that is happening. There's no sign, no suggestion that it's going to happen here. Is a lot of houses, instead of hedges, and hedges are being preserved on this site, they've put fencing which animals cannot get through, which does concern me. Because it's not much point having a green corridor if you're going to have a whole series of barriers of putting fencing on site. But what I can make out from the diagram that you've shown us, Robert, that there are plenty of hedges here which should act as that. So congratulations to the partnership between the offices and the negotiation that what you've achieved, what I think is a very good site. I'm always mooring about the size of houses. I'm not talking about the number of bedrooms, I'm talking about the size of the rooms. But this doesn't seem to be part of planning application now, so I won't go into my, get into my sub-box about that. The Park and Stride, it never is in the right place. That's the problem. To me, it is a close link to the, to the north. And the school seems to be halfway between the site there, which seems good. It's a question of the school can encourage the parents to actually use that Park and Stride. Because Park and Stride are dominantly for schools, although sometimes they do drift into other sites. The concern is, and I'm sure the town council will make sure this, it's only used Park and Stride and not for commuters parking all day. That would defeat the whole purpose of this. But I like it. Thank you very much for designing this. And thank you, Robert, for sticking to your guns and making sure it is produced.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. councillor Reed?
Thank you, chairman of the House. Congratulations in the honour. The outline plan is an indicative plan and they've not gone too far away from that indicative plan. However, saying that, when you come to an indicative plan, it's very difficult to say certain rights need to be removed. PD rights are something that we should really put into this category when you're actually looking at exact locations of housing. I'm very sorry that the PD rights in the majority of cases have been sticking and not been withdrawn. So it's a concern that someone's going to put up an extension, that it's going to go over into somebody else's and means the space and they can do it under limited control. And that is the problem. I'm sad that that's not been taken away. My other concern, obviously, was parking, parking for visitor parking. It can take a bad turn. And as Mrs Pennick knows, on the west of Waterford, you know, and yourself, you know, that what was made as long side parking has actually turned into herringbone parking and half the vehicles stick out into the road, which makes life somewhat difficult. But of course, you can't do anything about that until the roads are adopted. And even then, it might be a losing battle. The other area that is a little concerning is the management of the open space. I was rather surprised to see the 99 year lease. Never come across this element of it before. When it comes to public open space, this would normally go in perpetuity to the parish council or be offered in perpetuity. Sorry? No, sorry, I didn't say no, no. Sorry, I'm reading on 199 there. I'm not well. No, it is a concern because here we're dealing with one developer on the site that I'm connected with. We have multiple developers and each one have brought in their own little management grouping. And as councillor Benton said, they are very, very difficult because they do have this ability written into their position that they can up the monies annually. And I think councillor Brook has had effect of this. And again, this was this particular developer. So a bit concerning that it's not handed over to the parish or the town council in perpetuity. But in saying all that, those are my concerns. Overall, I think it's been a very long uphill struggle, which I've been involved in as well with councillor Power. I really feel sorry in a sense for the members sitting down at this table today that have not officially visited the site and had a site viewing because it was most interesting. So you have to say, well, it is fairly close to what was agreed. And in fact, in some senses, it's an improvement from the master plan itself. I can see no planning reason not to vote against this particular encouragement.
councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just to echo the comments of my fellow councillors, I think this is a good plan and I will be supporting it. My concerns are over vehicles, over 300 dwellings on the site. There's probably going to be over 500 vehicles on that site. And clearly that has been taken into account. I've had my questions answered, but I still have a concern over those number of vehicles and having them accommodated. I would desperately like to see the section 106 money used to properly connect this development into the town. I've seen other examples, Bonfong example, where it's not been connected in and there have been subsequent problems. So that's a really, I'd see that money used to connect properly into the town through active travel routes, covering cycling and walking and better connecting the school through this development into the actual town itself. And the third area is, I do hope the energy statement when it's produced will reflect what is coming forwards in new building regulations and not just try to sit within the existing building regulations, especially with the energy situation as we will see today. So it's really important that we take every opportunity to put sustainable energy sources into this development as far as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. I shall also be approving this application. This is a major addition to Oxford. But the back history of it, for those who don't know, was that this was the site chosen by the town council and the residents in local plan part one. And then the numbers, the numbers of houses. And then the detail has come in local plan part two. And I think it would be a very pleasant place for families to live. Life has of course changed since this was first thought of as a sort of housing development. And as my colleague councillor Westwood just mentioned, there's changes in energy, changes in thoughts on biodiversity, transport. And I think the developer has done very well to cope with these changes and to keep up with the constantly changing laws. Must be a nightmare. We've, most of us have been to the site. We went for the outline permission and we visited the Den Park and Rive Stride, Park and Stride site. And I did think then, it was quite a long way, but I do understand councillor Power's points that it's not in the right place. But can Mr Bobbins did explain to us why they moved it up to the north and I accept that. And there have been extensive consultations with everybody over the development. And our report today, Rob, was very full and very well presented. Thank you very much. And I shall be supporting, as I've already said, I shall be supporting this application. Any other comments from members? So this application has been recommended for approval with the addition of a condition on our update sheet about the employment land. Is that relevant today? It is? Yeah. And the, oh, sorry, the removal of class B rights for extensions to the roof. Condition two has been reordered, withdrawing reference numbers. I've mentioned it all and we have mentioned species that we would like considered, which are under threat at the moment. Yeah, so that's what has been, the sparrows and hedgehogs we've talked about. Okay, so with that and the other conditions which are in our reports, all those in favour of approving this application, please show.
That's nine unanimous, Chair.
Thank you. So the application is approved and we're going to take a short break because we have to have a changeover for the next application. So do you want it to be a bigger break than five minutes? My wife's suggesting fifteen. I'm going to compromise and say ten. So we'll start again at ten past. Thank you. So our second application this morning is Agenda Item 7, 21/02/05/7/HOU, which is a two-storey extension and alterations, 44 to 46 Broad Street, Oxford. Just before we go into the application, I'll just give a quick summary of the guidelines on safety. We're not expecting a fire alarm today. If you hear an alarm, then it's the real thing, and someone will come up to us and direct us to the right spot. The assembly point is in Abbey Gardens, and please do not use the lift. Could you make sure that your mobile phones are turned to silent or not likely to ring? The application will be recorded and streamed live on the council's website, and also is being televised, and that will be uploaded after the meeting to the council's YouTube, where it will remain. We have members of the committee sitting around the two wings of the table with their names in front of them. We have Julie Pinnock, who is the Service Lead for Built Environment, sitting next to me, and Fiona Sutherland at the end of the table, who is our legal representative, and Claire McCannan, who controls the clock for the speakers over there, and does the minutes of the meeting. For members of the public, we've changed from sitting on individual tables, if you've been here recently. So in the relaxation of the rules, we're now going back to speakers coming forward. And if you wish to sanitise your mic, you'll see in front of the mic those wipes to do so, so please feel free. And you have three minutes, unless you're a ward councillor and wish you have five. Please do not go over the three minutes. Sound will come from the clock, but I will let you finish your sentence. And then that's it. Please don't come back with any further contributions to the meeting, because your slot is in the public arena. So the case officer is Cameron Taylor, who is sitting over here. When you're ready, Cameron, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So this presentation is for a two-store extension and alterations to 44 to 46 Broad Street, Oxford. So here we've got a location in the site plan, with the site located to the east of Broad Street, with a private access to parking into another dwelling located on the northern boundary, and with the extension itself being located off the east elevation, which is in the rear of the property, along the southern boundary, along with an outbuilding which is located along the northern boundary. Here we have the aerial photograph with the site marked by the yellow triangle. In this, we can see the residential nature of this ground-mongering Broad Street, followed by the front elevations, which is from the west, with the existing opposed, and with the existing photo being the left and opposed being the right. And this will be the same for my plans throughout the dwelling, with the alterations to the front of these being none for the front elevation of the property. Whilst we have photo shown front elevation, we have the old forge, which is number 46, in the left-hand photo, with the dwelling number 44 located in the right, giving you the best hand of the property itself. We have a photo from the 20th century, which shows the heritage frontage of the site itself in Oxford. Next, we have rear elevation, which is the east, where we can see the extension itself is projected off an existing gable to the dwelling, being stepped below the existing bridge height, along with the alteration to the penetration of the old forge, as well as the replacement roof light, and the addition of a French door replacing windows and a door to the dwelling. Here we have a photo shown rear elevation, with the left-hand photo showing the location of the proposed two-store extension, and the right-hand photo showing the rear of the old forge. Here are further photos. The left-hand one being a photo shown rear from the 1960s, with the right-hand photo being towards the rear of the property from the private access which is located on the northern boundary. Next, we have the side elevation from the north, where we can see the projection from the rear of the dwelling itself, followed by, along with the actual stepping down from the existing bridge height to show some serpents, along with, they say, showing the par-hanging along the side of the first floor level. Here we have the photos, the left-hand one looking towards the northern boundary of number 42, from within the garden, and the right-hand photo being from within that private access looking towards the north. Next, we have the south elevation to the side, which we can see the extended projection of the extension itself from the rear, along with additional roof light which will serve a bathroom, with the outlines showing the improper location of the neighboring property number 42. Here we have photos looking towards the boundary from within number 42. Next, we have the ground floor plans, which shows the various internal alterations proposed, along with the outside landscaping changes, followed by the first floor plans, where the property will retain the same number of bedrooms as three existing. However, it will relocate one of the bedrooms into the first floor of the extension with an ensuite, with the bedroom then, the bedroom of the existing property then be replaced by a bathroom. Next, we have the elevations of the garden room itself on the northern boundary. And this concludes my presentation. The author's recommendation being for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we move now to the public speaking, and we have one objector, Alicia Saltzer. Good morning, Mrs. Saltzer. I do feel free to sanitise your mics as you wish to.
That's fine. Thanks very much, yes.
And so when you're ready to start, you have three minutes.
Do you mind if I stand up?
No, you can just make sure that you speak into the microphone.
I am Alicia Saltzer, and my family and I have lived in number 42 Broad Street for 14 years, and we intend to stay for many more. It is a listed property, and as such, it should be protected by the Winchester Planning Authorities. I am strongly objecting to the proposed two-storey extension along my garden wall for the following reasons. One, it would completely destroy an amenity which is in constant use during the summer months, and would seriously diminish the daylight to the rooms which surround it, i.e. like kitchen, eating, and sitting rooms throughout the entire year. Number two, the sheer size of this extension is inappropriate to the scale of both number 42 and 44, 46. It rises 4.2 metres above my garden wall and 6.8 metres up to the top ridge of the roof. And all of this is only half a metre away from my garden wall. In addition, it breaks the 25 and 45 degree angle of light into a neighbour's property and blocks all the light of the sun above my wall. My family and I erected a top wall in screen to simulate these measurements, and I have an enlarged photo with me to show you. However, Mr. Taylor has not included this simulation in the description you have in front of you on page 118. It should have been included to illustrate fairly the situation for my property. Number three, they also propose to create a common void along the entire length of this extension, which would prevent any access to the exterior of wall of my sitting room should the need arise. It would be entirely locked in. The wall is not their exclusive property, it is a shared amenity. Number four, this two-storey extension is effectively a new building and breaks Manchester City's own planning guidelines. It would cover an area which is 43% of the size of the Bristol's Cottage and Forge combined, and an area which is 60% of the Cottage alone. and an area which is sixty per cent of the cottage alone. The result is that I would be left with a dark claustrophobic tunnel in place of an open airy patio. Neither the Bristows nor their architects bothered to come round and examine the effect this extension would have on my life. The Bristows are part of a house which is inadequate to their needs. And should this application go through, I would be left with the equivalent of a prison courtyard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. There could be some questions, some clarification for you from members of the committee? Are there any members?
Are there any questions?
Councilor Rotherham?
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming on today. Mrs. Saltzer, you have your, I think it's, did you say it's your sitting room? Is the single story extension from the back of your house? That's right, over forty-two. How how much further than the existing house does your extension go out into your garden?
About four metres.
About four metres. And how much further than that is the new extension?
Another four metres. In all, there's a seven point something metres.
And you're concerned that that's going to, but isn't your patio south of the extension?
It is.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
No, my concern is that the height and the length.
Any further questions? Councilor Edwards?
Thank you. More a matter of clarification, I think. You referred to the wall between the two properties as being a joint wall. I just wondered if you could clarify the legal position, the ownership of that wall?
Well, nobody quite knows. These garden walls are a problem, which I'm sure you've come across before. But the Bristows seem to think it belongs to me. I don't know what their evidence is for that. I'm happy it should belong to me. And I think the reason they're putting this out is that if they do some reworking to the wall, it'll be to my advantage. But actually, the wall is perfectly stable as it stands.
Thank you. Any other, Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. It's just beginning on that particular wall. I'm looking at page one-two-two, which shows the proposed developments.
Yes.
And it will affect the first two buttresses.
Yes. No, I think, no, no, I think it comes, well, it depends where you're counting from. But if you come from the front, it's going to affect most of them.
So I'm just looking at that side of page one-two-two. Normally, buttresses are built on the side of the owner.
Yes, which is not me.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure if you've been on for this, Mrs. Saltzer, but we are on our update sheet have an additional condition saying that the extension can't be commenced to the suitable scheme to support the wall between forty-two, your house, and forty-four to forty-six Broad Street. But given what you've just told us, who would be financially liable to strengthening the wall?
Who? Do we, my neighbours or me? The thing is that the, as you rightly say, the buttresses is on their side of wall. But in order to build this extension, they would have to replace or redo the buttresses. And they they predate all of this.
I think our legal representative is going to tell us this is not a plan.
Chair, I will tell you that, yes. Perhaps I'd like to address after the public speaking, would you? I can do that after the public speaking.
Councilor Reed, sorry. Have you asked your question?
Yes, Chair, I think it's going to be answered.
Any other question? Any other questions? No, thank you very much, Mrs. Saltzer, for coming along today. And we have no one from the town.
A picture of the simulation, which should have been included.
Yes, I'm afraid we can't accept photos unless they've been approved by the case officer.
It's it's all in the documents.
Oh, right. And then we will have seen them, yeah.
Well, I wonder.
But thank you. Thank you very much. The ward councillor, Councilor Margot Park, you know the drill. When you're ready, you have five minutes.
Oh, I've been, yes, we have it. Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much. We all need to support applications that lay a listed building future, future-proof and suitable for modern living. However, I fear this extension is in the wrong place. And having had a conducted tour of forty-four to forty-six Broad Street, I do understand the difficulties. The problem is that the application for you, if you could look at page one-eight, one-twenty of your pack, which is the existing and proposed ground floor plans. We can demonstrate what this application creates. The middle drawing on that, or right-hand drawing on page one-twenty, shows number forty-two Broad Street itself. And the plan demonstrates that you are creating a void on the inside of that chimney stack, which will be two-story deep. To the right of the chimney stack, to the east, you are creating a very long and tapering void. And I think that must be about four metres long. Now, the foundations of forty-two are of unknown construction, I think is a generous way of putting it. And we do know that listed properties need maintenance from time to time. If this extension goes ahead, as it is on this application, you are creating a problem for maintenance. And I can, the only way I can see that the problem, that any problems in forty-two would be addressed is by, is via the shower room of number forty-four, which is not going to be easy to get permission for. Now, I did mention this to the applicants and, you know, they did understand the problem. And they therefore submitted another application to build four buttresses, three buttresses, which is application O-two-double-three-two, which is also listed. That creates four voids. Now, the historic environment comments on that are that it does not seem to be a sensible or effective long-term arrangement for the purposes of maintenance. There is a similar comment from the historical environment officer on this application. Now, I spoke to Mr. Taylor about this yesterday, and that is why you have an additional condition he has recommended. It's really a question of whether you should allow an application which creates a void which would make a listed building unmaintainable in part. And I welcome any input from officers or legal on this, but I don't think either should be approved at the moment. I think they both need more work. The the void as specified in the second application would be covered. That, in my experience, does not offer any problems of construction and mainly damp, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for Councilor Park? No, it seems not. So thank you very much for coming along today. Cameron, have you got anything you want to add in the light of what you've said?
Yeah, so following the first set of comments from the chairman.
Sorry, I haven't heard from the applicant. Sorry, sorry, Cameron, the person that, and the agent, Mr. Simon Goddard. Sorry, I forgot. So, Mr. Goddard, thank you for coming. You're the agent, I believe. And you have three minutes. The clock is there. And you have three minutes when you're ready to stop.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I think we should look at this whole question of the wall and the void that's being created between the two, except that's critical. The neighbours actually were supportive of a smaller extension, which would have been built in exactly the same place to create a similar condition. What I have to describe this to the applicants is effectively recreating a cavity wall. So our new building is an independent structural, its own right, supported on new foundations alongside the historic wall, which we've done many times before. We then will then enclose the whole of the top of the void between the two with lead in stepped base. And then there's ventilation between the buttresses to allow that whole section to be ventilated. So no one need ever go into it ever again. This is something we've done many times before. And it's rather like a cavity wall that many of you would have in your own homes. You would never need to inspect the inside of your cavity. The lead can all be detailed and it would be dealt with through party wall process. So all of those questions of maintenance are actually are not relevant because the wall is ventilated beneath and cat-ophylate above. The the question of heights and areas, I believe, are slightly inaccurate against the plans that we've produced. We have raised this with with the planning officer as well. In terms of the roof height, that's set half a metre lower than the existing gable that extends from the building. And also, there's a difference in ground levels between the two properties. In terms of lights, our clients have commissioned a sunlight report, our right to light surveyors. And one of the the planning guidelines on clause four point five-three, the supplementary planning document that the city council have, talks about interruptions of extensions to the south. This extension is to the north of where the neighbouring property is. There is also a window that's currently in the gable end, which looks down the garden of the existing, the existing house. And the new window will do exactly the same, albeit a bit more further forward. The distance that the house projects beyond the existing is approximately four point six metres. And the neighbouring property extended their house by four point six metres in two thousand and seven. There's an application in the, on record for that. So I believe in terms of what we're doing, they've commissioned fat reports, heritage reports, sunlight reports, structural engineers reports, all of which support the application as it's presented to you. We have considered this question of the cavity and the wall and how it can be maintained. And our client is very happy to pay for that work to be completed.
Thank you very much. I can stop you there, won't you probably finish anyway? No, please stay, because there could be some questions of clarification for the members of the committee. Are there any questions? Councilor Reed?
Chair, we go back to the more original question with regards to these two buttresses. It would be greatly affected.
Yeah.
The ownership of that wall, which I think we'll be getting an answer to later on. That particular, those first two buttresses are with thought are crucial to the ability for that wall to stand up in some respects. So I'm not quite sure what you're going to do with those buttresses.
Well, the the wall is listed in so right, and I believe it is in separate ownership. That's why there are two different applications which are under consideration by the council at the moment. The buttresses are built on the applicant's land, although I think they are providing benefit because they're leaning towards the applicant's land. They are in themselves relatively sort of historic, but were only a sort of a relatively jerry-built repair to actually try and keep some support to the wall. In any new building, we would actually put new buttresses against that to be able to, and by having a greater number of buttresses, we're able to make the the degree to which they stick out into the applicant's land much smaller. So structural engineers have been commissioned and reporting on how those can be completed without impact on the historic fabric.
Thank you. Councilor Amy?
I'm interested in the structural engineer report. Is there a foundation on the wall? And is there foundations, proper foundations to either of the properties? Because a lot of these older properties didn't really have any foundations.
Quite right. And boundary rules particularly have very slender foundations. They're normally just built on crushed flint and so on. They're normally only extending probably a foot below the ground. And there is a difference in level already between the two properties, probably around about two feet. Although it varies as it goes back towards the garden. And structural engineers are fighting these situations. And this is why the new extension will be completely independent of what happens to the wall. But what we normally do is we then have a toe which would still come underneath the the wall itself. So it's a party wall matter rather than slowly being a planning matter, which allows us to then introduce reinforcement on its own foundation. So I'd still want to keep the two separate, but so there's no impact of the new structure on the existing wall. So they're almost having to do this where those two applications, looking at the question of support for all and the question of support for the wall.
And and the, does that affect the house at all, the neighbouring house?
No, I mean.
Would that be taken down a fair way?
Yeah. The, when when these sort of matters happen, and they do happen, you know, where we've got party wall conditions, as we've advised the applicants, the neighbouring property is able to appoint their own party wall spare. And then there's a sort of a technical discussion over how that, you know, how that's delivered. So this is something that's, you know, it's very much based on calculation.
Any further questions for the agent? No, thank you very much. So thank you for coming along today. Thank you. Any other? Yeah, and if you want to talk to the committee now or?
I will, Chair, yes. I'll deal with that first, yeah. I can confirm that ownership of the wall isn't a big matter. It sits outside of the planning system and a matter may have to be resolved separately. There's obviously a concern being expressed over the effect of the proposed extension on the wall. And that's why Cameron's added that suggested condition to the update sheet that requires that a scheme be submitted in collection, support of the wall. And in fact, you've just heard helpfully, I think, from the agent as to what that scheme is proposed. I think, Chair, that feels obvious, is actually. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So that's the wall done. Anything else you want to add, Cameron?
No, no.
Okay. So members will go to the report. Sorry, I haven't found the page. Oh, well, not the beginning of nine. But is there a principle of development?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, thank you very much. Sorry to be so slow. Page ninety-nine. You've probably all there for me. Principle of development? Any questions? Councilor Reed?
Could we clarify? I was a little taken back by the local members' reference to enlisted building, a listed building. And so this, it always has been in the past, where if we have an application, the two come together, as two applications on our sides. But there's no mention of the listed, of listed application at all. Do I ask why that is? Why have they been separated?
And also, we've, it seems there's another application floating around as an alternative for those. But this is the one that we've got today. So we normally have a heritage separate report.
So there is a, essentially, a second listed application, given it is a listed building.
Could you talk into my?
That was brought forward, there is a listed building application for the extension, as it says, is a building. However, that was brought forward, given that there wasn't a number of objections required.
Yeah, generally, I think that each case has to be assessed on its own merits. Yes, of course, what we do have, what we call twin applications, one is the planning application and one is the listed building application, simply listed building consent. We do deal with those separately. And when one triggers, normally the other triggers as well, because people write in on both. But we have only received, I think, two representations on the other applications dealing with other issues and not the planning extension itself. And we have therefore already brought this one. And obviously, depending on the outcome of this one, may affect our decision-making on the listed building application. That isn't in front of you today, but I think they cover the same issue, Chair.
Right, I'm not, still not too sure. Right, I'm not, still not too sure why we haven't got them together first, anyway. We might have the other one eventually. No, we won't.
Chair, I think the other one can be dealt with under our scheme of delegation. But of course, what we will make sure we do is we won't do something on that application until we know the outcome of this one is today and what the committee's thinking of.
Chair, can I ask, when I read this application, I realised that just up the road, you may remember at the beginning of Covid, we had another application for a new dwelling at the end of a similar plot of land. Knowing the area itself is protected, what I was going to ask, Chair, is if we could have a site visit to look at this one. Now this wall's come up, I think it's more relevant that we do look at this as a site application.
Okay, so we, do you have a second, Chair? Okay, so the proposal is a site visit, and that would mean a complete rerun of what we've done today at the next planning committee. So are those in favour of a site visit?
That's five, Chair.
Five, is it?
Yes.
Are those against?
Three. Three, Chair.
So the application is now stopped, and just to explain to the public speakers, we will come out as a committee at a date which we have yet to decide, and then we will be the first item forward at the next planning committee, which I think is sixteenth of March, but I'm not sure. It's, it will be held on the sixteenth of March.
Chair, I think, yeah, what I'm saying is we wouldn't necessarily pinpoint the committee date at this stage, because, you know, depending on the site was explored and what other work we've got in the work stream for the committee work.
It might be sixteenth of March, I think about that.
Yeah, and if we're looking at bringing in the other associated listed building applications as well, then we'll take a bit of your committee time, and we've already got a schedule of work, so, you know.
Yeah, committee's a very busy thing. Department's very busy at the moment with applications. So, yeah, the majority of the committee has voted for a site visit, and that's what we're hoping for. Thank you very much. So that brings us to the conclusion, and that we just stopped that application. But everyone who's spoken today has the right to speak again, because we will be rerunning the whole application. But members obviously felt they needed to see themselves. Thank you. So I just think that any new people in the group, I'd like to start the next agenda item, agenda item eight. I'm starting the next item. Agenda item eight, which is twenty-stroke O two, one, oh, four, stroke F U L. This is the erection of a single-storey outbuilding within the rear garden for ancillary staff and residential use in connection with the existing care home C two use. And this is at Hamlin, Hamilton Road, Denmead. The gentleman at the back in the white jumper, are you here to hear of the safety? Yeah, so I don't need to say that. And Nicola Clayton is, was the case officer, but she's not here today, so it's been taken over by Simon Avery. So Simon, when you're ready, I'm ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So just to get our bearings, this site is in Denmead, so on the southern side of Hamilton Road, it's here, outlined in red here on this plan. So it was previously a dwelling, Hamlin, which is fronting Hamilton Road to the west. There are dwellings which back onto the site, so they're back gardens, back onto the side boundary of the site. To the east, we've got other residential properties side by side with the building on the site. And to the south, there are more residential properties backing onto the site. So the proposal is for the retention of a single-storey outbuilding within the rear garden for ancillary staff accommodation used in connection with the existing residential young person's care home. So just to explain the history of the site, so it previously was a dwelling. In 2019, planning permission to be used as a care home for young people, so young people aged between six and eighteen use the care home. The original consent allowed for five young persons to be accommodated in this building. Since it's been implemented, since its implementation, the internal arrangements within the building have changed slightly. The care needs of the young people have changed, and the accommodation within the building itself, there aren't any more bedrooms being proposed, but they are larger bedrooms, so some of the staff facilities, space of the staff facilities is reduced. And since then, this outbuilding has been constructed to the rear to allow more staff accommodation. Just show you some plans of this quickly. So this is a single-storey building located to the rear. There's a lounge area and an office area and a small staff bedroom and kitchen area. As you can see, it's just a single-storey building. I can show you some photographs of the site. So this is looking from the outbuilding, which is to the rear of the main house, back towards the main house. So this is the main house, we can see here the main part of the view. This fence separates the garden, the main garden of the main care home from where the staff accommodation is located. There's a pedestrian access from the main care home house back to the new staff accommodation at the rear. So this fence here is the garden area for the main car care home, and this is a part running on the side of it. So these photos are taken when the new staff accommodation was being constructed, but they illustrate the distances really between the building and the boundaries on either side. What's the next one? This is some photos of it as completed, gives you an idea of its appearance and relationship to the boundaries. Just actually move back to the main block plan. So the issues to be considered with this application, since it's within the settlement boundary of Denmead, where development is normally acceptable in principle. Policy CP six of the local plan supports the provision of local services and facilities, which this would fall under. So in terms of the principle of development, it's considered to be acceptable. The issues to be considered further, it's not an intensification of the actual use of the main house, there's still not going to be any more than five youngsters accommodated in the main building. The use of the outbuilding is really mainly for staff facilities. There would be provision to a lounge, so some of the younger young people living in the care home could be brought down to the outbuilding if needed. And it also provides facilities for families, family members of the youngsters in the main care home. But it isn't actually an intensification of use, so there aren't any additional parking pressures arising from the proposal. In terms of its impact on the character of the area, it's a single-storey building, it's not visible from the public realm, so there's no adverse impact on the character or appearance of the area. In terms of impact on residential amenity, as you've seen from the photos, couple of those, it's a single-storey building, sorry, single-storey building. There are still retained, there's still retained a fair amount of planting along the east and west and some of the boundaries of the site, which provides some screening for it. Might be that the roof of the building is visible from neighbouring gardens, but it's not considered to be tall enough or imposing enough to be bearing or causing loss of light. There's no loss of privacy issues. So in summary, officers are satisfied that the principle is acceptable, there are no adverse impacts arising from the proposal. Have big concerns raised about noise arising from the youngsters who are accommodated within the care home. If there were, if there's antisocial behaviour arising from this use, then this might be something really either for the police or primarily, I think, in the first instance, for the operators of the care home, but specifically a planning issue. So summary, it's recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we move into the public participation. And the first public speaker is an objector, Mr Banbury. Good morning, Mr Banbury.
Good morning.
If you wish to sanitise your microphone, you're free to use the wipes that are there. You have three minutes when you're ready. And when you start, the clock will start and the clock is over there.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I'm Pete Banbury, I'm a...
Just a minute. I think you've got some slides.
Yes, I have.
Can we just wait? Yeah, you sort of need to know before I pop down again. Okay, for that.
You ready?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Pete Banbury, I'm a resident of Ait St Jack's Way. Actually, on behalf of the residents in St Jack's Way and Hamilton Road, the neighbour back onto the new Hamlin development. Back in November nineteen twenty nineteen, there was a C two residential care home which was accepted, and the residents there did accept that, were quite satisfied with that. This new development, though, is a totally different kind of fish. It's absolutely massive, it's overwhelming, it's huge. It took several months to construct, there was never any consultation with any of the neighbours at all. Before I have a look at the slides, I'll quickly go over our concerns. One of the main concerns is the development itself. It's ugly, it's huge, it takes up space, it's not fit for purpose. The design of it itself, I've got up-to-date pictures of it, which you can see in front of you now. It's, it's just a horrible building, horribly looking building, it looks totally out of place. We used to have trees, we had lots of wildlife, all that's gone since this construction was made. There's no owls anymore, there's no birds that come into my garden. I'm a police officer. I can't see there's any access for a fire appliance to get to that. If that was to set on fire with vulnerable service users, that's a major concern of itself. There's no way a fire appliance would get down or even park in their car parking area. Parking on Hamilton Road, that was said, there's no issues with parking. I object to that, yes, there is. Cars back to park and shifts change over from the people that are working in there, a new shift comes, they hang around, parking up on the pavement, parking in other residents' car parking boards, stuff like that. Smoking area is a stop for accommodation, they stand outside disgusted in my garden, service users, and I also have a cigarette, I can hear everything. Electrical issues would come onto that, there's an alarm that went off for seven hours with staff not even knowing the alarm was there, let alone turning it off. That was in August. There's wires that come into my property, and there's also lights. Can we have a look at someone's picture, please? You can see that's my driveway, you can see popping out the top of that, that is new Hamlin build, you can see it in the road, it's there, you can see it, top corner. Give us next slide, please. That's the light from the Hamlin into my bedroom at night. Twenty-four seven, that's on. Give us next slide, please. This, I had to go to the Hamlin, they would accept that there's alarms going off, they weren't even aware it was there. That alarm went off for seven hours, I had to disconnect that alarm, it says it's full of electricity, staged on Saturday, danger to service users.
I'm awfully sorry, I'm going to have to stop.
That's fine, of course, what was it?
Yeah, thank you for raising those concerns of this. And it could be that you've got a points of clarification somewhere. Could you tell me where the parking is?
Yeah, it's at the front of the property, St Hamilton Road. It's like a gravel car parking area, and it's constantly full. There was recently after Christmas, an ambulance had to go to the Hamlin itself, that can get it, and cars were actually parked up on the road, it's a blind road, you can't see, so you've got cars sticking out onto the road itself.
And what are we looking at here?
Just about see that, that's wiring coming into, from the new build, I don't know what the wire is, apparently it appears to be electrical, coming across my boundary, on my fence, going into my neighbours' garden, from the new build, I don't know what it is, no consultation, it's just there.
And the very first slide that you showed us had a sort of trampoline and things, who does that belong to?
That's the one over.
Okay.
So that's how close the actual bill is to what was it. Shades of death.
So they've put a narrow, thin strip there?
Yeah.
Got it. Councilor Reed?
Good morning. Would you like to explain exactly where this property is located? Because the maps that we've got don't indicate the veins in the road. You're in between two double veins.
Yes, yes, that's the theory coming from this. Building itself is in the back of the main Hamlin development, so you've got development, and then you've got a large garden, and that garden's halved, you've got the new build going up, so it's away from the road. The picture that I showed you, which you could see from the road, is St Jack's Way, looking at the development itself. So the road itself is Hamilton Road, comes from, if anyone knows that area, wide up up down, going to Hamilton itself, and it's on like a corner. So if you, if you can imagine, sorry, a bit amateurish, but you're coming down a road like that, Hamilton would be here, it's blind, and then you go round and the cars up on the side of the pavement.
And have we seen all the slides? Is this the last slide?
Those were all the slides I was about to, to give you, Chair.
Any further questions? Councilor Edwards?
Thank you. From your experience, what use do you see being made of the new building? That's a pretty good question. Is it being used for one meaning of the word staff accommodation? I see it in one place. That's a pretty good question. Is it being used for one meaning of the word staff accommodation, or simply one place for people to live? Or is it-
Chair, now just interrupt. Sorry, sorry councillor Edwards. I think the point of this session is to clarify matters of clarification that the speaker has raised. And actually, what you're trying to do, I'm afraid, is to try and expand upon the application. The application is as it is. So speculating as to what it requires is not really part of this application, I'm afraid.
I accept your point, although I was making reference to this gentleman's statement that he had heard people discussing events and operation of the building. And I just kind of, kind of, but I, I would draw, I-
As I said, it's obviously what we're looking at is planning decisions today. Thank you, Chair.
We all get told off at some point by our legal representatives, and quite rightly so, because we need to keep to what we're looking at. But I think what the question that you're asking might come out in the questions on the main report. Any other questions? No. So thank you very much, Mr Banbury, for coming along today. The next one is the parish councillor representative at last. Councillor Paula Langford-Smith. So you have three minutes. And when you're ready, the clock will start and it will beep at the end of your three minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for hearing me today. The planning application that Winchester approved was on the basis of a maximum of a home for five children aged six to eighteen. Residents of the area were assured that it would be no different to living next door to a family with a few children. The aim of the building was for the children to live together as a group to provide a stable family environment for those in care. The application stated age six to eighteen with carers staying in the house to provide that stable family environment. It also stated that a few shrubs would be removed to ensure that the garden was contributing to the health and mental wellbeing of the residents. Indeed, this was a significant point made by the developer as a reason for choosing Hamlin as this perfect site for the children. This application seeks approval for an additional building with a footprint of that of a similar, if not larger, size to the main house. This is because the original condition number three attached to the permission has been ignored. Condition three states a care home for young people and no other purpose. And that was in order to restrict the use of the premises in the interest of highway safety and local amenity. This application shows that the home is not for a family environment, and this was never the intention, as the main building clearly demonstrates. Additionally, both applications are and were retrospective. Winchester are already fully aware of the parking issues that this, this development already causes. It's been reported by many residents and also by the parish council, with parking on the pavement outside, which means that wheelchair users have to go into the road. And as stated, it's a very dangerous curve there. This application specifies assisted living where residents can live independently within their own personal space. They're effectively individual apartments inside the main building. You granted permission for five children with the conditions attached, and these conditions have been ignored. Denmead Parish Council believes that the planning process is there for a very good reason. On this application, there is significant loss of amenity for the residents because the trees that were promised to remain have been removed and result in significant overlooking. I've already mentioned parking issues. There is a clear breach of the conditions. We would ask that you stand by your permissions granted and appreciate that due process has been ignored. The scale and mass quoted by the applicant as being no different from outbuildings any other house in the back garden would have. This, quite frankly, is ridiculous. There is another house in the back garden. It's not an outbuilding. You agreed to a house for five children with staff inside the building to look after the children as a family unit, not a block of studio flats which require another house in the garden for staff accommodation. We respectfully request that you stand by your decisions for a family home and refuse this application. Thank you for your time.
Perfect timing. Thank you very much. There might be some questions of clarification for you. Other? Any question? No. Thank you, Karen. Well, councillor Pearson?
Uh, Langford Smith, can you remind us the age of the children?
Age six to eighteen.
Well, if I answer the question, because I was a little puzzled by the reference to the original application of independent living of the children if they're that young. Sixteen, eighteen or perhaps, but not below the age.
Or stop with the planning permission. Back in the evening. Your property's children must have planned it not to-
Which clearly that is the last.
Just a second.
There are, the original planning permission approved five bedrooms. So I think they are, the arrangement of the accommodation is not really a self-contained flats in the building. They are bedrooms.
Let's explore that in the questions on the report. Any, any further questions for councillor Langford Smith? No. So thank you very much, Jade, for coming along today. And finally, we have a supporter, Philip Dudley, who is the agent. Good afternoon, Mr Dudley.
Good afternoon.
So when you're ready, you have three minutes to tell us whatever you want to say.
Lovely. Thank you, Chair members. Just to clarify, this, this, this site and building is a C2 residential care home. It's not a dwelling. And the condition on previous consent was for young persons. There was no restriction to what that, what age group that young persons should be. It's now been established, and obviously there's been various changes to the layout as, as the care needs changed. Therefore, there is a requirement for additional accommodation, which is to support the C2 use. So the C2 use is the planning use. The proposed building is therefore required for additional staff accommodation and also accommodation for residents to meet their needs, which, which are ever changing. The whole idea of a care home provides assisted living where residents can live independently with their own spaces, but with some communal space within the C2 use. The proposed building is a single-storey located in the rear garden. The scale and mass of the proposed building is no different from outbuildings that you commonly see within rear gardens. The existing garden is large and well screened for adjoining properties. And separation distances are provided that are within national standards and generally accepted by RPAs. As the proposed outbuilding is a single-storey, any windows would be to the ground floor elevations only. Therefore, boundary fences will screen any overlooking. The number of people living in the building will be restricted due to regulations imposed on the use of the regulating body. This type of proposed use can be effectively integrated within residential areas. The proposed outbuilding will create no increase in traffic, movement or parking that would rise from the existing uses of C2. The proposed use of the site buildings will be a C2 use that will include the proposed outbuilding, which is subject to this planning application. The purposes, the purposes of reckoning fences within the rear gardens is specifically specified to the use of a care home depending on the type of residents and their needs that need outside space. Sometimes this outside space needs to be separate from, from, from the other residents. The proposed outbuilding is located in the rear garden. It's not accessible by any central drive to the side of the existing building. There's only pedestrian access and the outbuilding and the use is all contained within the constraints of existing care home facility. This is application seeking approval for the extension of a single-storey outbuilding within the rear garden. Granting staff and residential use in connection with the C2 use. And this is what has to be considered. The objections about breaches of the condition is not, is not relevant to this application. I trust members will follow the office's recommendation and approve.
Thank you very much. Any questions of clarification? Councillor Reed?
Sorry, could you just go over your, the start of your statement when you refer to the what was the existing use of the original application in November?
The official, the permission that has been granted originally back in two thousand and nineteen was for the change of use to a C2 residential care home.
From?
From a single dwelling.
Okay, I misunderstood what you said.
Oh, yeah. It's a C2, it is now a C2 residential care home. It's not a dwelling anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Rata?
You said that you considered that the size of the single-storey staff accommodation in the garden is no bigger than any other garden rooms built locally. Are there any that you can point to on the similar size?
In my meaning, that was not necessarily, I could identify where they were. And what I was trying to advocate is that if that was a single dwelling, you could have built that size outbuilding in the back garden under PD rights. So therefore, to me, the size of it is not, is not overly what someone could have built as a dwelling.
I'm afraid I have a few questions. I have a little list. So how many beds are there in the new extension?
There's not, well, there's not, the, the accommodation is as per the plan, which I can't remember that being planned up. I think it showed, it showed staff accommodation to one side and a communal lounge to the other side.
I'm just trying to get a handle on-
Yeah, no, no. I think the accommodation now show, obviously, is, you're, you're within a C2 use planning unit. So the whole building is used for staff accommodation and residence. So the actual building itself, I've got communal lounge to one side and staff accommodation to the other side. So that could, you could have staff living in that bit. Alternatively, they might have to put a resident in there. If the resident is causing problems in the main house, they then put a resident in there. So I can't say that there's two bedrooms, one bedroom. It's flexible. It's within the C2 use. There's no definition of whether it is called a bedroom or a unit. If you say it's-
Yes, so it depends on need.
It depends on need. They move their, their, the, the people that are in there. If they have specific behavioural problems, then they might use that space for them to live in. And then the staff would live back in the other house. Or the staff would go back downstairs if everyone was happy in the main house. So it's, there's no specific number of bedrooms. It's more to do with the amount of, the amount of young people that they allow, which is five.
Thank you. Next question. I, I see that you didn't take any pre-application advice. So why have you built this as a retrospective application? I know you-
I say, I hold my hand-
It's at your own risk?
I, well, I hold my hands up and say, obviously, I'm purely acting as an agent for my client who has simply come to me and said, I built this. You can use it as a retrofit application. I was, obviously, I'd not advised my client to build this. I've just basically picked up what he's done. So I hold my hands up and say, I'm here just to basically say, this is, this is it. This is what we're asking retrospective consent for.
Because although legally there's nothing to stop people from something, there is the question of, well, lights like are monte, parking and whatever. And the city council does like to talk this through with applications before the structure is actually up and presented as a set of accommodation. Right. Could I then come to the tree? And I noticed that there is no landscape plan, but do you intend to replace some of the trees?
We can replace some of the trees with, with additional landscaping. At this stage, we've not done anything because we've not been requested to do anything from the ground up.
So you would be happy with a landscape?
If, if there was additional planting that you, that you think needs to be done, the boundaries or elsewhere, then obviously we'd be happy to, to, to put something together as a condition.
A final question. The slide that we saw from, I think it was Mr Banbury, was it?
Yeah.
Of the lights. It did sort of shine like a beacon in the night. Do you not have curtains or blinds or?
Again, I'm not, obviously, I'm not, I'm not actually being sort of there to see the lights on at night time. So I'm not aware of what comes on. But obviously, again, I'm, I'm happy to, to put something forward in terms of lighting to be controlled or, or something to be designed or something else to stop that happening. I appreciate that that's not, not an idea to have a light shining like that across, across your garden.
No, but I couldn't understand why it would look so bright. Because when we looked at the plan, all the windows seemed to be-
Obviously, it's an external light, isn't it? Is it, is it not an external light?
So should we look at that plan again?
I presumed it was a, a external light. It's not a light from inside.
What did you tell me?
So Judy's just getting the-
No, I wanted the plan of the inside with the, yeah. So I think it's in your control, isn't it? Anyway, we'll, obviously, we'll discuss-
As I say, external lighting, obviously, we're happy to control that by our condition, if it is external.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. From what I can make amuse, Mr Dudley, this building is not a planning permission. And therefore, everyone looks at some of the photographs that Mr Banbury showed. It appeared not to benefit of any building regulations either. It's the wiring goes everywhere in one, which suggests that anyone in that accommodation would be at risk. So why have you, and again, we said there wasn't any pre-application consultation. So this question is why, why, why?
Building regulations is all fully approved because it's, it's done through a private inspector. So as part of the works to the main house, it was all approved under one application. Building regs and planning don't have to work together. You can, or you can obtain building regs for something. Doesn't necessarily mean you have planning for it. So everything was approved by the building inspector and signed off. Obviously, if things have happened since then, that's down to the applicant or the owner to obviously solve the problems. Now, the electrics and the lighting is obviously something that's happened after it got signed off by building control.
So that's an interesting lecture. But this, this building itself, this annex, had been put up without planning application. So it's retrospective.
Yes.
Because it is retrospective, it clearly therefore, because it's an annex, one part of the main garden, which is the bridge mat gate, didn't benefit from building regulations. It couldn't do it because the building wasn't there.
Yes, but you can obtain building regulatory approval for something. Doesn't necessarily mean you have planning for it. That's, that's law, that's part of the legislation. I can obtain building regulations for the works and include that annex. The building inspector, as long as it complies with building regulations, that's all he has to sign off for.
The fact still remains, building regulations are important because I'd only make sure that-
Oh, yes. Yeah, that's why it was signed off.
Not only the building is sound, but also make sure that no breaches of fire regulations. And as far as why when we've seen these photographs, I would suggest do breach those regulations. However, clearly don't know the answer, so.
I'm going to ask Fiona to update us, well, I know we all know, but on the status of retrospective building. What is this one?
Chair, as you say, I'm sure that the committee already knows that retrospective annexes, it is not illegal to apply for planning permission after a building is built. It's done at the risk of the applicant. And you need to consider a retrospective application in the same way that you would consider a prospective application. So it's not something you can hold against the applicant. And I would just add, I think as the agent has said there in relation to building regs, that building regulations and planning, the planning process do run separately. So it would be perfectly possible to apply for a building regulation consent or now an unauthorized building, which appears to be what's happened here.
Councillor Leveney?
Yeah, could I ask a further question on that? This period must be safe and compliant and conform to health and safety, as well as the child regulations of that building. What we've seen today associated with these photographs contravenes that. We should be therefore informing the local authorities that we are unhappy with the photographs that they've transferred.
Chair, I think you do need to personally be very careful about photographs that you've shown because you don't quite know what they're showing. But I would say that the matters that you're addressing are not related to planning. They don't affect your decision today. You know, in, in terms of our, any responsibility to tell other authorities. Well, I'm sure the applicant's agent and the applicant will be aware of those issues and can address them separately in this planning matter.
No, I'm just, I'm really worried of the safety of children in that building, with what we're seeing.
Okay, I think probably we got to the end of the grilling of Mr Dudley. Sorry if it felt like that. And so thank you very much, Mr Dudley, for coming along. And we move. Simon, did you want to say anything, Chair?
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up on a couple of points. So as I said before, there isn't an intensification of use. And that there are still only a maximum of five young people in the care home use. Therefore, there is an increase in parking. Parking was approved on the original application. Just picking up on a couple of other things. I think the fire access was mentioned, but that again is another building control issue. In terms of light pollution, which we've seen the photograph, we could apply- we could apply lighting condition if that was deemed helpful. And again, we could apply a landscape condition if there was benefit to that. I think a lot of the issues, such as the alarm going off, are management issues, they're not planning issues as such. The wiring, which we talked about. In terms of plants being removed, I think, understanding is that plants were removed in the middle of the garden area to allow for the building. None of these were protected trees or anything like that. So again, the landscape condition could improve that situation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So we will move then to the support and principle of development. First of all, page 126. Could I ask, Simon, on the light of what you've just said, is that even though, and I do understand from the agent that the use of this building will be flexible according to the needs of the young people at the time, but could I, do I understand that it's still only permission for five children, six to eighteen, regardless of whether they sleep in the main building or they need to be in the ancillary at the bottom of the garden?
Chair, I don't believe there is any planning restriction on the children. They've only accommodated for five in the original application. There isn't a condition saying no more than five shall be allowed to accommodate.
So that sort of negates the statement that you made, there's no change in parking? Because there could be, if you've got more than five.
Could be, but we could consider a condition possibly allowed to defer to.
Looking back to that, Shaun, and the councillor Reed?
Yes, Chair, it's all a very similar line in a sense. The application refers to within the garden, not an ancillary, for ancillary staff. Today, we heard from Mr. Dudley that this could include a client as well. That is a little disturbing because of if you've got a problem client and you move them to the back garden process. That doesn't sound very safe in a sense. And it's not going to really accommodate the neighbours or instructions. The problem is, this application is for ancillary staff, nothing about residents.
I still want you to look at that slide. It's a sign that we're doing it, where we look at the inside of this building. Because I think there's only one set room and one bathroom in there. So if there were children down there, or perhaps they'd be eighteen year olds, but, you know, there would be no room for ancillary staff. Can we look at that? It's in our pack. Page 124, 134. So it is, is it clear to me, the use of that? I do understand that needs children change, but it isn't clear to me. You see, there's only one bedroom at the back and one bedroom at the front. And then there's a lounge. Did you want to ask a question, councillor Rutter?
Yes, please, if I may, Chair. The applicant considered that the building could have been built in the normal garden if it was still a dwelling house under permitted development rights. Is that the case? It seems a very large dwelling that could have been built under permitted development. And I'm happy to agree with the Chair that we should have conditions on lighting and landscaping so that we can put back some of the trees that have been taken out. And I'm also slightly concerned about noise and the way in which the building is being used by the staff, which is clearly impacting on the neighbours. I don't know if there's anything that we can condition in terms of controlling noise or whatever. I don't know, I'm just asking one question. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, an outbuilding of this size could be constructed without planning permission. You can put large outbuildings, they're not over a certain height. I don't think there's any restrictions we could put on to manage the noise. Again, I would say it's a management issue for the operator of the care home, I know.
Chair, is it possible to answer the leading question as to if this application is for ancillary staff, can it, without any other planning, if you be used to bring clients into that area?
Well, I think it could have been built with permitted development rights. So who's going to answer that?
I'm just reading the details of the application again, actually, proposal. Simon, proposal action, say. I mean, the point, Chair, I think is that the unit as it is, the whole red line, it's part of the same planning unit. It all has a C2 use. And to my view, generally means that provided it's used in connection with that C2 use and not introducing another use, then that would be acceptable. The application is sound. Ancillary staff and residential users, I think the intention is it's flexible.
Yeah, so the residential use could apply to the children.
And I think Chair and Agent made it quite clear that it is the intention that the accommodation could be used flexibly and then maybe changes within that. But in terms of planning, I don't think that's probably in this description, just part of that C2 use.
I understand, sorry, I understand, Chair, but that raises another matter which is outside planning and that is a health and safety issue and the safety of young children.
Yeah, well, that comes under building control, won't it?
I think that there's all sorts of different bodies that we're dealing with. How the safety of young people in a care home such as this that aren't planning matters, Chair. It would depend on the issue. Chair, while I've got the mic, if that's okay. Mr. Solomon and I were just looking at condition one in the paper. I know we've talked about, Mr. Avery's explained that there isn't a limiting condition on the original planning permission, limiting it to five. And that was because at that time, the floor plan limited that in itself, didn't it? Because it showed its floor layout. What we're just wondering now is a slight amendment to condition one. So it would read that the outbuilding hereby permitted should not be occupied at any time other than for purposes ancillary to the residential care home use and to accommodate no more than five young adults, Chair. And that would ensure then that this use in combination with the original C2 care home didn't exceed that number. I think that would pick up on the point that the speaker's raised.
Well, there's a huge lounge, isn't there? So are you saying only five people can be in that lounge?
No, Chair, the suggestion was that restriction of five would be for residents. It would have no impact on the number of staff or visitors.
So we need to say, we need to say to accommodate no more than five. Residents? In total. Does that include the lounge?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. I don't know if anyone's going to check that there. Right. And while we're talking about conditions, I would like to add a landscape plan condition. There should be one. Because it's a substantial number of trees that were taken down, which affects the biodiversity. And also something about the lights. Now, I don't know whether it's screaming of what we see at night or no outside lights or I don't know. But do I have the committee's assent to those two conditions? So can I ask officers to look at those two issues? So we were going back to impact on the character and appearance of the area, page 126. But I mean, actually, questions on anything because it's difficult to pinpoint it entirely. Councillor Edward?
I suggest, Chair, another condition, another suggestion, another condition.
Your suggestion is, you haven't got your mic, Chair.
Yeah, another condition, and that is if we are minded to pass this, this ancillary building should always be part of the main care home.
Correct, yeah.
Not a separate family home.
Yes.
But it's not a condition of that.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Chair, and I think condition one does say that, doesn't it? Because it says the residential care home extended as given by the letter. Should any use of senior unit accommodation should not be subdivided, separated, altered in any way. Condition one does cover that, Chair.
Well, they have to apply for planning permission if they want to talk about it. There's no access to that bottom building. Okay. Any other question? Councillor Westwood, sorry, Councillor, I know you wanted to. Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair, yes. So we were also informed about noise. And a few alarms and discussion on this, because it's creating impact on the neighbours of this property. Can I ask if there's any conditions that we could apply to address the impact on the neighbours of noise and other activity coming from that building and the disclosure of confidential information, which we've talked about. So it's the noise aspect that I'm interested in.
Chair, I was going to pick up first a question about the disbursement of confidential information, which would be under other legislation and not a planning matter again.
We don't normally put conditions regarding noise because that's covered by environmental health regulations. So if any residents are disturbed by an undue level of noise, then they should contact the environmental health department, who have separate powers to do it as well. Councillor Edward, wondering?
Thank you, Chair. I think this is probably just another request for legal verification. We heard a number of objections to this, well, no, actually, we had one objection, restated very forcefully, to the scale of this building. And my understanding is that because this is a C2 use, permitted development on that C2 site is not restricted by regulations in terms of its overall size in relation, say, to the original building or the whole plot. Is that correct?
I think that's probably a confusing question. But basically, I think the point being made was that if had this still been a dwelling house, it would have had permitted development rights. Because it isn't now a dwelling house, it doesn't have those permitted development rights. But the point being made is that the scale of this building is similar to what could have been built under permitted dwelling rights for a dwelling house. Does that make it clearer? So in other words, if that was your house, you could build something as large as that in the back garden, basically, without planning permission. But those rights don't exist because this is a C2 use, not a dwelling house.
Thank you, that's very clear.
Councillor Reed?
Chair, now, I'll have to be guided. We heard from one of the speakers about emergency vehicles. Is it possible for an emergency vehicle, such as a fire rescue authority, to reach that particular? The house itself virtually fills the whole width of the plot, which was what was said on the first application for change of use. So I'm just saying, can we be certain, get a fire appliance can be brought to tend to that?
Well, they have very long hoses and they do, because they can reach my house. And you know how far down Monty, down the coast. And presumably, they have to go through the house with a long hose.
Chair, my first response is it isn't a planning matter, it would be for building regulations. My second answer is we were often asked this, and you say we have experience of this. Yes, they can, they need to get to a certain point to the frontage and then they'll roll out a long hose.
I have a second question, Chair. Surface water treatment. As the photographs showed, large puddling of water on the site. This is the fact that the majority of their median, I think I've said this before, sits on the landing play belt. And over the last four years, due to climate change, the soakways don't work anywhere near as efficient as they used to. My garden or parts of my garden, they're going to tote the mud if it just sits with the rain for a couple of minutes. What is the treatment for surface water drainage in this particular site? Because nothing's actually been measured.
Page 128, it talks about sustainable drainage. It doesn't raise a problem.
Chair, I don't think we've certainly not been alerted to any drainage problems arising from the development. I think it would probably be at the top to apply a drainage condition to this building, given as we've said, an outbuilding could be constructed of this size if it was a residential property without acquiring any consent. So I don't think there are any drainage issues. I don't believe any of the objectives raised, that concern, be aware of it. So I think it would be unnecessary.
Okay, are there any other questions on any other point? So, David? Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I know we're a little bit worried about this application, but I think that in planning terms, we have to accept it. But I am very keen to see that we have two new conditions attached to it, as well as the addition to the existing condition one. So I would like to see a landscape proposal and lighting conditions to restrict the display of security lights and make sure that basically that the nuisance that is being caused to neighbours is removed. And the other issues that we are concerned about are not planning issues and we shouldn't be discussing them here. And if neighbouring residents have concerns, they should raise them with the relevant authorities, I'm afraid. In terms of the actual C2 use, I really hope that this new building in the garden will provide the accommodation that staff need and the flexibility that they may well need for the young people who are living in the home. And I hope that they find a peaceful and secure new home in this building. And these children will have had a very difficult start in life. And I very much hope that by having this extra provision in the garden and some better landscaping, that their lives will be significantly improved. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lanning?
I'm very unhappy with this application. Even I know that I don't particularly appreciate retrospective, but this really takes a biscuit as far as I'm concerned on this. We're told that because it's got C2 use, it doesn't necessarily have automatic rights for development. I think it's oversized. It doesn't take into consideration proper care and what I would expect from this building for children. And I cannot go on with this, I'm sorry.
So your material planning reason for voting against this would be?
It's overdevelopment on that side and it's not permitted development rights either.
Right, thank you. Councillor Nelson?
Thank you, Chair. The nearest thing that I've seen to this was an annex for a house in Colton Common, which we turned down, I think, two or three times and eventually went through the planning inspector and was passed, if I recall rightly. But that was an annex to the house. Lastly, we discovered it was for a disabled person. But we're talking about a different situation here. Each application can have a look at itself. In planning terms, as Councillor Rutter says, it's very difficult to say this is a, we've got to turn this down. But quite frankly, in this sense, planning is an ass. It really is a nonsense. What we normally require from a planning application is just not here. There's no consideration of the landscape requirement, either as reference or part of the report. This is not the officer's fault, this. There's nothing reverting to biodiversity and a minimum of 10% gain for biodiversity, nothing at all. We say it is no permitted development rights because this is a C2 use. Rather interesting, if I wanted to put a building of this size on my garden, I'd have complaints, no end complaints from enforcement, and I'd expect it. Lighting, we've seen evidence in photographs, quite clearly it's too bright. But it's very difficult to, when you're taking photographs of lighting, is to... You can change the position of the camera and make the lighting look greater. But I'm afraid I'm just not going to vote on this. Because I'd be damn right ashamed to pass this, I really would. This is going to be used possibly for naughty children. I went to a boarding school when I was this age. And quite honestly, if I was stuck in effectively an outhouse, I would have had a whale of a time. It's not the answer. What social services is thinking about this, allowing this sort of thing to happen? I just can't imagine, but that's part of the planning industry. But again, the photographs of the cables. Now, what's Fiona said, this cable's going to be anywhere. But it does make a question about fire regulations. And so would the fire service permit this? Anyway, that's not a planning issue. So our hands are tied. I'd almost suggest this should be deferred, while some of these things are sorted out. It's quite honest, I'm sorry. Well, I think, is it Sam or is it Nick, whoever wrote the reports? Yeah, it's gone as far as it has, from the information they have. And but how to conclude? Well, there's no planning reason to turn it down. Frankly, I am just not going to vote on this. Means I'm staying, because I'm so disgusted with this. Not the report, but the implications of it, it's just not up.
No, okay, you made your position clear. So, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. If members can remember, I did ask the objector as to the location of this particular structure. It is on a series of double bends. And this is more or less slap bang in the middle of those double bends. Visibility is not terribly good, whichever way you look. There's already a problem, which has been pointed out by the parish councillor, of parking on the site, or at least the changeover element of parking, their parking on the highway. The B2150 of the Hamilton Road is the main artery from Hamilton through to Waterloo Village. And is heavily, heavily trafficked. There is a local bus service that runs part of the day through the village. One of them actually goes up into Hamilton, so that's good. I think what we're... This is an ancillary structure to go with the main house. But what we failed to observe, in a sense, it is an ancillary building, but the land has been subdivided. That worries me, I have to bet. All the other elements that I spoke about earlier, and not quite planning matters, but something that ought to be in the planner's mind when you're looking at these things. I find it difficult to understand that you may well put a client at the bottom of the garden. These are children. So there is obviously a safeguarding issue, which is outside of this planning. But nonetheless, I would not look to party to that possibility of happening. I think Commissioner Lady was correct. This is actually way over development of these sites. And unfortunately, I will not be able to support this application.
Any further contributions? I have one. I do agree that it's very big, but we hear that this could have been permitted anyway. And the site that we referred to in Colden Common, we all voted against it. And the inspector dismissed the appeal. And that was, you know, probably the same size. You've got to learn from the appeal decisions. And I can't see the material planning reasons to refuse this. Agree about the size, agree about the lights, the cutting down on the trees, the parking. But we hear the rational argument that there should be no increase in parking. And we put a condition on for lights and landscape. And so most reluctantly, I have to say, because I really wish it wasn't retrospective. So we could have sorted all these things out to start with. But most reluctantly, I shall be supporting the application. Any further contributions? So this application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
That's two, Chair.
Three.
Sorry, three.
Those against?
Two, three.
Three.
Is that three? Yeah.
And those abstaining? Three.
Three, three, three.
We've never had this before. So that allows me to give my costing vote, which I'm really sorry for those who abstained or voted against. But I should repeat to my original vote and give permission. So this application has been approved. Members in your hands, would you rather do the appeals at the end of the day? Or now?
I'd like some windows closed, it's getting very hot in here.
Yeah, so we were adjourned for lunch to start again in two. And we're starting with the last planning application, not relevant. Okay, because one report has been deferred.